Good evening and welcome to the 18th November Select Board Meeting. If you're able, please rise and join me in seeing the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first agenda item is actually our introduction of our new Select Board Member, John Driscoll. So, John, congratulations on your victory in the election. We're delighted to have you here on the board. We have some discussions this evening about some of the Select Board stuff, but would love to invite you if you'd like to say anything, either to your supporters or just the town in general.
I just want to thank everybody, both sides, for the voting that Tuesday, and I just hope I can fulfill the commitment. And thank you for the opportunity for speaking.
You're very welcome, and we look forward to putting you to work.
All right, thank you.
So next, we're going to have a public comment. By our rules, a public comment is limited to 21 minutes total, and each speaker is asked to keep their remarks to three minutes or shorter. I will keep track of the three minutes, and Mr. Milano will keep track of the 21. I think that may be a lot of introduction to something that we don't have anybody to speak for. But you can, if you're online and you wish to speak, you can raise your hand as well using the Raise Hand function, and we can promote you. Going once, going twice. All right, no takers. Our next item is the Route 28 Randolph Road Diet Pilot Program. And I know from earlier meetings, along with Mr. Milano, that we have a few folks here that, from the abutting neighborhoods, that would like to join us to speak. And so I would invite you to come up to the microphones now and share your thoughts. And we'll engage in some dialogue. I did give the warning that the microphone is sensitive, so just twirl it so whenever the person is speaking, because otherwise, folks at home won't be able to hear you speak.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to note that I'm going to recuse myself from this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Hagerty. So maybe, Mr. Milano, do you want to give us kind of a quick rundown on where we are on the timeline for everything, and then we can maybe have a bit of a discussion?
Sure, thank you. So, the pilot, Road Diet Pilot, excuse me, has been in place for several months now. Mast dot has been out both observing conditions and meeting with us on a fairly routine basis to share observations and tweaks that they are making. I know in the past week, they've been looking particularly at signal timing throughout the Randolph Ave corridor and have, effective yesterday, changed some timing to, that will give some time back to traffic that's on Randolph Ave. They had dialed that back prior to the Road Diet Pilot. In addition, they've been out to observe conditions on streets that have been impacted, in particular Clifton Road, but they've been out generally to observe the conditions. They've been kind of very responsive to conditions and issues generally in terms of areas they'll study. The website that they've posted on the Mast dot page is being actively updated. Additional information was posted in the last week or two. Their email address, which is where we do request that comments, questions, concerns, and issues be addressed to, is monitored. They do respond. They keep a log of the emails they receive and their responses. So, they've been out there, you know, Milton Police, DPW, and our team have been out as well, sharing observations and concerns and, you know, what's working, what isn't working. And it's, this is the purpose of the pilot, to try to figure out some tweaks as we go and adapt to issues as they are brought up. So I'll just note that they've been very responsive. There is, in the works, a meeting here in Milton that Mast dot's been working on, some availability through legislative delegation. So once that finalized, we'll share that too. So that'll be an opportunity for Mast dot to come out, present here in Milton, and solicit feedback and comments and have a listening session. So once that is firmed up, we'll be able to share that publicly as well.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. And I'll just add too, that as much as we'd like to say that we're in control of Route 28, it is a state road. So, we're working with the state on this, and we're hoping that, you know, the Commonwealth can be responsive to our requests and everything else. And we welcome comments here, and we will share those comments. But the, and it's, it'll be important for folks, if they have opinions, to join the Mast dot session as well as soon as it's announced. So, we'll notice if that be given on the website, or...
Yes, we'll share that. They'll share it, and we'll blast that out publicly and broadly.
Okay, very good. So with that, we have a couple of folks from Clifton Road, I believe, who are here to talk about the impact that the Road Diet has had on their street in particular, but we also welcome comments about the Road Diet sort of more broadly as you've observed it. I think everyone's probably been in it at least once or twice, but you folks are living next door to it. So, I'd like to turn it over to you, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves, giving your addresses, and then maybe sharing your initial thoughts, and we can have some Q&amp;A here.
Sure. My name's Amy Morrison. I live on 58 Clifton Road. Been there for 13 years. And we did prepare some slides for the evening, so if, Mr. Milano, if you could pull those up when you have a moment, that would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Sure. Travis Gregory, been on 45 Clifton Road for about 13 years also.
Thank you. So we'll have the slides pulled up. They'll be visible up here when they're ready.
Thank you. I just want to note, some of our neighbors are here tonight as well in support, so...
Thank you all for joining us.
This has been very much a team effort on our road. So, I'll kick things off. We just did a couple of slides to kind of guide our thoughts here. So this is the issue. Clifton Road is a pretty thickly settled side street off of Reed's Dale Road. We run parallel to Randolph Ave. Mostly a quiet side street the past 13 years that I've lived there with my family. We had a traffic study done through the town back in 2018. Actually, it was the first week of November in 2018, so pretty comparable time. And during that study, we had data that the street had an average of 175 cars in a 24-hour period. So 24 hours, 175 cars. Since the Road Diet was implemented on October 3rd, we are now absorbing the volume of traffic that can no longer get onto Randolph Ave due to the traffic. We have data collected by some of our residents, as well as the Milton Police, who've been kind enough to give us a speed sign to do some data collection. We are seeing now 500 to 700 cars from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. alone on weekdays. So you can see the drastic change, just looking at those numbers. But, things that we've noticed are drivers are turning onto Clifton Road from Reed's Dale Road, and also coming from Pleasant Street, which is like heading from East Milton. They can't turn onto Randolph Ave when they get there, so they're, they're cutting up Clifton Road to eventually get back to Randolph Ave later down. Next slide, please. So we have, you know, we really feel that residents are at risk here. We are unable to enter or exit our driveways or the street during peak hours on weekdays. We have frustrated drivers that are driving over sidewalks, trying to pass each other during traffic. These include large delivery trucks. We've seen beer delivery trucks, grocery delivery trucks. They're unable to turn out at the end of our street because there's so much traffic and it's so, such a tight neighborhood. Residents are being harassed. We are enduring swearing and yelling and beeping from passersby. I had an experience one evening pulling up to my home with my 14-year-old daughter in the car. A driver slowed down, pulled over next to me, rolled down his window, berated me, so much so that one of my neighbors actually came out to see if I needed help. So that's very unsettling, just to give you an example. But we, you know, we really feel that this is unsafe. It's unsafe for drivers, children that live on the street, as well as pedestrians. We have a couple of videos here that we just wanted to show, just to kind of give some context to, you know, what we are experiencing, and we're happy to share those out later. But just wanted to kind of outline what the experience has been like since the Road Diet went into effect. If you could go to the next slide, please.
Can I just add, if you go back, Nick, sorry.
Sorry, no, go right ahead.
The picture up on the right really kind of explains what's happening, right? We have, it's a densely populated area, and the picture's not huge, right? But people park in the street so their kids can play in the driveway, so people can do things outside of, because a lot of the driveways are small. So we have to park in different places along the road. There's some houses that can only fit one drive, one car, but they have two cars in the family, or more. So you're looking up Clifton Road going towards Highland. Now you can imagine what would happen if somebody's trying to come down Clifton Road in that also busy timeframe between 3:00 and 6:00. Not only are you having people cutting through Clifton to go up Highland, to go back off to Randolph, but at the same time, you have to imagine people are coming back from picking up with their kids at middle school, picking up their kids at the high school, and now they're trying to get home. Now, we get a lot of cut-through traffic, but it's never been this insane. It's always been a way for people to get through and go past Canton, you know, by the library to avoid that. And that's fine, but it, we're, it's every, say, every time the light cycles, you get at least five to 10 cars going up the road. So now people can't get down the road, and now it's becoming more of a safety issue. People are pulling, like Amy said, pulling over onto sidewalks, trying to pull around people. It's, it's, you can't navigate the road when two lanes of cars are trying to come down and people in the perfect timeframe where people are out and about in the afternoon are parking on the road. It's really in a dangerous situation that's going to start to occur, especially as people get more and more frustrated.
So, thank you, Travis. So we're here tonight, we're here to ask for your help. We need help. We don't know what the answer is necessarily, but we, we know we need help from the Select Board in the town. We know that a pre-study about the Road Diet did not include side streets and the impact that that would have, or not our street, anyway. We also know that GPS apps are directing drivers to Clifton Road to get around Randolph Ave. We have a couple of examples that people, you know, friends and other neighbors have sent us, hey, my, my GPS is telling me to cut down your street. So that, I'm assuming is drivers coming from every direction. We are looking for short-term relief from this situation that we are enduring right now. We are hoping for some signage and a plan to outsmart somehow these GPS systems. We need some technology assistance. We know that they are being directed to our street, in addition to all of the regular local traffic, which, you know, we're, we're used to. So we've asked, we asked at the Traffic Commission for a Do Not Enter sign at the end of our street at Reed's Dale Road for certain hours. We were told that that's not a favorable solution. We are wondering about a No Left Turn sign, perhaps at the end of Clifton Road, onto Highland Street, so that, you know, people cutting through would not then be able to turn onto Highland and then get back to Randolph Ave. That was a recommendation. We are not sure if or how the process for those changes to be updated in these apps. You know, I don't know if that's something that Mast DOT could help us with. I'm just, you know, we're just kind of throwing out options. But, you know, we, we're not experts. We are not traffic consultants. We don't know what our options might be. So we're asking really, I think, for our own pilots, you know, for Clifton Road, just to, to see what might help in the short term. And then, long-term, we don't know the full out, final outcome of the Road Diet, or what that will look like, you know, long-term for the town. So, we may need to take a few stabs at this, and that's, that's what we're asking for. Solid, Travis. Go ahead. Next slide.
Nail it.
So really, we, we know that this is not, this was not the intent. And certainly, we all agree that Randolph Ave is a terrible road. We've lived here, we travel it all the time. It is unsafe. This is an unintended impact of a state pilot that was meant to solve another problem. But we, we know it's the town's responsibility to protect the neighborhoods, and we, on Clifton Road, we should not be absorbing all of the, the unsafe driving that created the problem on Randolph Ave, all of that volume, all of that risk, all of those issues. This is just not sustainable for our side street. And, you know, we're here tonight to, to partner and, and ask for your help. We really like some short-term signage to see if something might work. And I'll also, I have one final note here. We also need a long-term view to address the Road Diet and the 90-plus apartments that are going in at 711 Randolph Ave. Right now, there is no route for those residents to travel north. They will all come right out of their, their parking lot and end up back on Clifton Road. So now we have all of that traffic headed our way as well, probably in, you know, the spring or summer of next year, whenever that development is, is final. So, that's, that's why we're here tonight, to, to ask for your help and to hopefully start a dialogue about that. Thank you.
Thank you both, and thank you to everybody who's come in. And full disclosure, Mr. Milano and I met with some of the residents previously last week, and so part of, we've, we've had the opportunity to ask some questions and have some dialogue, so would love to turn it over to our members for questions or thoughts or ideas that they might have, both about Clifton Road, and then if we, if there's anything around the broader topic that you guys want to discuss as well.
Do you have some other folks who want to share? Somebody you want to hear from them?
Oh, please.
Sure, we're, we're not from Clifton Road, we're from the Hillside Neighborhood Association. We want to comment about the...
I think that's fine, yeah. Do you guys want to swap seats for a second?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
And then, I'm assuming you guys don't have a PowerPoint?
No.
No. You'll be relieved that we, we actually sent it in.
Yeah, we saw the emails. Please, introduce yourselves and, and go ahead.
I'm Mary Beckman. I live at 640 Harland Street.
Robert Muzzi, 291 Hillside Street, for 45 years.
I think I'm 13 years, 13 years there. I'm currently the Vice President of Hillside Neighborhood Association. We've had a lot of discussions with members of the town administration, with Select Board, about Route 28 and traffic issues over the years, and wanted to come tonight to report on a survey that we did of the neighborhood. We sent in a report to the Select Board and also to Mast dot, but thought it might be helpful for the discussion just to share that. There's about 130 households in the Hillside Neighborhood, and we sent out a survey, October 26th, and we had 61 responses, just from neighbors, about how they felt about the Road Diet. We're planning to redo a survey, maybe after the first of the year, after a little more time has gone by. We think it's important to note that slightly more than half of the respondents support making the changes in some form permanent, because people do feel, generally speaking, that it's safer. And our neighborhood is right adjacent to Route 28, and we have felt the danger of that road, I think, on, on a daily basis. At the same time, though, as our neighbors in Clifton Road have experienced, we, we are concerned about cut-through traffic. That's, that was the, the primary concern. There are some other concerns, but we have also done some informal monitoring. We understand Mast dot did a count at the Hillside intersection, and we may hear more about that from Mast dot when, when that discussion happens. We don't think that that one point fully captures the traffic, cut-through traffic flow through our area, and have actually purchased a traffic monitoring device that we're informally sort of trying to keep track of things. Based on findings as of November 10th, we have an average weekday volume of 1,245 cars going through on Hillside Street. That's a 30% increase over the town's most recent count, which we believe was in 2017. And also, 25% of those vehicles were traveling at speeds over 31 miles an hour. And in our neighborhood, that's a real safety issue because the streets are narrow, there are no sidewalks, and the sightlines are not straight. It's, it's quite alarming. I'm sure you can appreciate that. I'm sure our neighbors on Clifton Road can have experienced something similar. So, I think it's, you know, it's kind of a mixed bag, but overall, I think people feel the Road, the Randolph Ave experience is safer, are concerned about congestion and about the cut-through traffic. I don't think we have a particular ask other than continued, well, we have some suggestions. Continued monitoring and official traffic counts would be great. We've had discussions with Mast dot about that in anticipation of the roundabout, and they agreed, because our neighborhood is just going to experience a lot of increased cut-through traffic when that happens. They didn't have the same response with respect to the Road Diet. Any support we could get on, on more official monitoring would be great. Any increased enforcement on speed and traffic signage, like stop signs, would also be great. And as our neighbors from Clifton Road requested, help with the apps would also be really useful. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll add, I did, in order to get a feel for how would the cut-through traffic, I actually sat out from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. one evening, about two weeks ago, and with a radar gun, to actually count the traffic, record them, and see what the speed was. And we, during the day, we got about, that particular day, we got about 1,500 cars through on that street, and the, a huge rush at rush hour. And I'm not sure exactly where people are cutting through, but from, say, 3:00 to 6:30, there was just an enormous number of cars coming through. And I have tabulated all of those, and we'll be submitting that to the, to the town. But about 30% of them were going well over the speed limit. Some, some people over 40 miles an hour. We have no sidewalks. It's dark on the street when, when there're, there're scarce street lights, so it's just unsafe. Anybody who walks on the street does not walk from 3:00, 3:00 o'clock on. We know that it's, it's not safe. So that was my direct experience.
That's right. So, again, comments, just comments and information offered in the spirit of further collaboration, and we appreciate that the town and the Mast dot have been working together really hard to try to address all these issues at the same time. We don't know the answer, as our neighbors don't either, but appreciate the continued collaboration and opportunity to share our experience.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
I do see a hand up online, and given that we've been taking speakers from the crowd, I think it would be the right move to, if you could promote, thank you, Mr. Milano. Can you hear us, Mr. or Ms. Hajrizaj? Sorry if I butchered your name.
This is Bard Hirisai. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Yes, if you could just give us your address and then your thoughts or comments.
Yes, 11 Spafford Road. You know, neighbors here with, with my friends on Clifton Road, so just very quickly, I wanted to speak. You know, I think like, like you heard from the neighbors in Hillside, I think many of us on Spafford here, just a couple streets over from Clifton, you know, generally positive on the improved safety on the, on the Route 28 Road Diet. You know, makes a lot of sense, you know, slowing the traffic down. And I had interacted with the Traffic Commission and been part of, you know, gained a little bit of experience from various traffic studies, given some of the new development in our neighborhood over the last few years it's been approved. So, you know, what I, and I'm sure, you know, forgive me for, maybe I'm joining late, but the 2021 Route 28 Corridor Study that was done, to me, has, has a lot of good suggestions on how to, how to try to address some of the, the concerns that have been raised. And in particular, the time of day Do Not Enters are a key suggestion, you know, because in this corridor study, you know, they, they propose exactly what's, what we've done here with, with the Road Diet. In fact, they also recommend it on the Reed's Dale portion. And, you know, one of the ways to mitigate cut-through traffic, you know, Table 12 on Page 66, says that the time of day Do Not Enters from 3:00 to 6:00 are a key way to do that. Now, the neighbors on Spafford, you know, we've, we've tried, we've pushed for that angle for the latter streets, you know, the Clifton, Spafford, Buckingham, and Martin in the past, and there has been resistance. And I believe the main source of the resistance was around, you know, well, if, if we enforce that, we have to also respect it for our police fire, DPW, et cetera, and that's, that's a difficult thing, given the vital services they provide. But I think many of us neighbors feel like, you know, given all three of those are in fact in the neighborhood, that, you know, we don't, we don't see that as an impediment, that they should be treated as neighbors, as residents, and allowed to use them as, as Milton residents would. So, you know, I think the Select Board has a chance here to really revisit those suggestions. I mean, I think Travis said, you know, we're not traffic engineers, but, you know, this report's 450 pages done by traffic engineers is suggesting time of day Do Not Enters for that period to, to solve the problem that they're facing. So I think it warrants a second look. And then just quickly, from the Spafford perspective, you know, we have data from 2019 showing about 250 cars a day on a weekday. When Milton Hospital went before ZBA to get approval for their emergency room expansion, they did a traffic study, and their data showed about 650 cars in an 11-hour period in, in early 2025. So in the, in the period of about five, six years, it's almost a threefold increase. And if you extrapolate that up to 24 hours, that's a little bit more than that. I would say since the Road Diet, we've probably seen an increase to that. Maybe, you know, we haven't measured it like our neighbors on Hillside or, or Clifton, but it's, it's also increased a bit. I think these, these streets that are the last before a major intersection, you know, it's just natural, you know, whether it's turning left to avoid the, the light at Canton Ave and, and Route 28 Reed's Dale, or whether it's that, the turn that they mentioned before, you know, historically, the town, town in Milton in this neighborhood has, has put Do Not Enters on many of the streets. If you look at Artwill, if you look at Lodge, if you look at Coolidge, Highland itself, in fact, is, is a permanent Do Not Enter, you know, so many of the streets have been kind of closed off. And the ones that don't, the only ones that don't really have it are, are Clifton and Spafford, being the last ones before major intersection. So, you know, I, I think it does warrant a revisit, because I can tell you, we've been dealing with a lot of the same aggressive driving and yelling and cars getting clipped, you know, mirrors getting hit, you know, if you drop your kit off and don't move fast enough, someone beeps at you. If someone's frustrated, stuck behind a school bus, they beep or they turn around, you know, and it's not the high school kids, it's not, you know, I think it's commuters, it's truck traffic, it's people trying to get through the town as fast as possible. And let's face it, at the end of the day, you know, we're not going to stop all the volume of traffic, but what we can do is, is improve the safety. And I think that's what a lot of these things are designed to do, and so I would, I would, you know, submit. We have some good data already in hand in studies that have been done, like I mentioned, that Route 28 Corridor Study, which gives us some solutions that are worth, worth pursuing. So, thank you very much. I appreciate the time and, and, you know, I'll be paying attention. Hopefully, we can move this forward.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thanks for joining us. And you can lower your hand whenever you're, you're ready. Thanks. So, let's turn to the members. I see Mr. Wells is also with us online. Thoughts, comments? We can all, we have folks here that you could ask questions of.
Yeah, I think we've been, I think I'm, I think we've been receiving the emails and foreign notes to Mast dot. I'm surprised to hear that the resident was told that we aren't able to do the No Enter signs. I think in some of our communication, we talked about having that on, on, on Clifton, and then, you know, the impacts on Spafford. And then, you know, the impacts on Spafford and Buckingham and those corresponding streets. Uh, so that is something I think we should be looking into locally or with Mastodot about having those do not enter. Um, between three and six, especially with the
I don't disagree, yeah, yeah.
Truck traffic going down those streets.
The truck traffic is very concerning. Mr. Milano, do you want to share a little bit? Because I know, um, DPW and MPD both weighed in on the, um, the do not enter signs.
Uh, yes, so, um, what I think was repeated was Traffic Commission comments that they weren't favorable. I, I, I think those comments were in in relation to Clifton Road alone, rather than treating those four streets kind of as a group. Um, the do not enter residence-only version, um, it's no, whether it had been, it's no longer a sign that's recommended under the standard for traffic control devices. So that's, that adds a little bit of wrinkle. And then obviously, it introduces a little bit of complication in enforcement in terms of from Milton Police to who is a resident, who isn't, um, in terms of pulling over. Um, one of the other concerns would be, um, police and fire and everybody else is supposed to observe a do not enter as well. So it introduces, you know, if there's a house on fire, police and fire will do whatever it takes to get there. But if they're responding to a non-urgent call, they're supposed to observe the rules of the road like anybody else. So it introduces a little bit of complications. Um, so that's probably generally the response. I think from my perspective, viewing this as a dot, uh, as a pilot, um, whether we, you know, go outside what we typically try to do and and noting that it's a pilot and trying to adapt to the things that are changing, um, that might be worth further consideration or further discussion. Um, so that's kind of the gist and general kind of pros and cons of the do not enter, um, signs.
Mr. Wells has his hand up. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, let me put my hand back down first. So a little bit different perspective here, clearly. Um, so I've spent a lot of time as the residents in Clifton, Bedlam, both Hillside Group and, uh, Clifton Road neighborhood. Um, a couple of points I'll just, more from a practical understanding, having an operational background on this as police chief and for so long. So the do not enters were a popular thing, um, probably through the nineties into the early two thousands. And then one of the difficulties that happened within, and I know the gentleman mentioned some of the streets were almost closed off, is that every time you number one place a do not enter, and and the Clifton Road residents will know, because this is what I said to them is, so let's say you put a do not enter on Clifton, six to eight, or four to six, or four to seven, whatever. So the traffic that was dispersed between Spafford, Buckingham, Martin and Clifton is now dispersed between Spafford, Buckingham. So four are now taking, three are now taking the work of four, or vice versa. And I believe the Traffic Commission, not long after I retired, adopted a policy to really look a lot different on do not enters, that they, that sometimes the negative impact was greater than the singular impact of one street. So I understand that. I did mention, I don't know if I did mention to you, Mr. Milano, I haven't heard it mentioned tonight. I know I came into this in the middle of this. Um, looking at this from an operational perspective, this, the issue here is a volume issue. It's not the speed signs on Clifton, that's not going to change six hundred cars in in two hours or three hours. So changing some of the signals, I don't know if you can change the apps, maybe Mastodot can, and I'll actually make a call on that tomorrow if I can. But if you're going to do something on the four streets, because you can't do it on one, you gotta do it on all four. Do not enters residence-only is not a legal sign on the call up to Massachusetts, unaffordable, you can't do it. Who determines who's a resident, who's not? Someone hits someone, it just, it's not a, that's why you don't see it anywhere in this, in the town, anywhere else. You could do the do not enter, but if you do four do not enters, that means the residents of each one of those streets can't enter either. So if you live on any one of those four and you're coming home between the time you you restrict it, they can't come in from that entrance either. So my thought had been that, and I'm willing to go and speak to the Traffic Commission about this. I led a little bit to Mastodot, even though this is not a Mastodot decision. I think this would be a town decision, I know I'm being lengthy here, but this is a complex issue. Um, would be to do four no-left turns on a restricted turn, on the restricted time from the streets that are restricted. And I would think that we should recommend, and I don't want to, because the Traffic Commission recommends to us, so I don't want to jump ahead of that, let them look, oh, this, analyze it. Mr. Milano, you can carry the water if you want. We do four no-left turns on Highland from Clifton, Martin, Spafford and Buckingham, with whatever terms, whatever times they, whether it's four to seven or four to six. I think four to seven would probably be the appropriate on, given this issue. And I've watched this meticulously, I've been there each week, watching all the different scenarios there. But you can't just do this. This would require, I know, I'm hearing about the speed, Milton Police can't be everywhere all the time. But when you make a change like this, this is going to require some diligent enforcement, and they would have to designate some significant response here to discourage it. Because once the people realize that there's, that they can't do it, and that there's a penalty for doing it, then they won't do it, and hence, they won't take the shortcut. Um, that's one suggestive relief. And there's a second, I think there's some possibility here of this. The second thing to the question about Seven Eleven Randolph Ave. From my office, we've already started to broach this issue with Mastodot because that complex wasn't in their plan when they came up with the road diet. So I think it's going to be, um, important for our DPW to relay to them when this is ready so that they can make whatever change in that dis, in that location between Pleasant Street and Readsville Road to allow for cars to come out of the, remember, you're going to have ninety units here. Allow them to come out and go, um, left or right, um, so that they don't have to fall into the scenario that was described by the Clifton Road Group. So those are just some of my concepts, looking at this. And then just the final thing, as you know, Mr. Milano, Senator Driscoll and I have talked with Mastodot a lot on this, and they will be coming on on December eighth at the, in the community room with the Old Milton Fire Station. And they'll be there to answer any questions regarding the road diet plan and how things have been going so far. I think, I think I've covered all I can think of on this right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Richard, can I ask a, a follow-up to the solution you just entered? Uh, the no-left turn signs would be at the end of the four streets we're talking about, right? No-left turn onto Highland? It strikes me that that doesn't stop the traffic from then beginning on the streets. We would end up
So if you look at
There would be on-side streets with no way to turn, but to go back in the circle.
No. So if you look at the cars that are taking the shortcut, I think it's like nine out of ten go left. And which would, that follows the suit of the PM commute. The majority of the, the trouble for every one of the northbound commute is come, traffic coming from the south. The trouble in the PM commute is traffic coming from the city heading south. So if you already know that the majority of cut-through traffic is going left on a Highland street when they get there, if you make it illegal for them to take that left, you're now discouraging them from using the street because you are now forcing them to take a right and go back and start over again. And, uh, I think anyone has to do that once or twice, they're going to always, I don't want to do that again. Or B, they take the left, get a ticket, or they, or they get stopped. Through the enforcement you put in place, that's a way to discourage it. And my final point to you, Mr. Daley, and that is that if you go with the do not enters, you're forcing the residents out of they get home in the restricted times. That's, that's the difficulty. How are they going to get home? And that's, as I say, do not enters, there's no such thing as a do not enter residence-only. It just does, there's no such thing in the, in the chapter ninety statute, it's called. That's, that's why I, I, after looking at this and spending a lot of time, knowing different tools that they might have available to put in place here, do not enters at all four would prevent people where the majority of traffic is taking a left, continuing south along the Route twenty-eight corridor. Because the only reason they're taking, they're taking the rights onto these streets is they don't want to sit on the Route twenty-eight traffic. But the goal of the Traffic Commission has always been, in every aspect, is to force traffic to stay on the main roads. I know that was a long way, but I hope I answered your question.
No, you did. I'm thinking that the signage would have to be at the beginning of the street so that folks don't turn on to one of the four side roads.
You mean on Readsville?
Yes, on Readsville entering Clifton, Buckingham, Spafford, Martin. It would say, do not enter, no through traffic or left turn, or no exit.
No, this is different than a do not enter. So this is, you're talking a sign similar to here that we have like at Franklin Adams. And there are different locations in town where you cannot make a legal turn. So this would be, you'd get to the top of Highland, you'd have a square box, arrow, left arrow with a big X through it. It says, no left turn.
I, yeah, I think what Mr. Daley is getting at, it's okay. Uh, Mr. Driscoll has his hand up.
Uh, Mr. Wells, that Seven Eleven Board of Appeals has that they can only take a right out on the Randolph Ave. So like, do you have to go before the Board of Appeals to change that?
I don't, I don't know, I'm, I don't think that's, I don't, I was before and I testified in that case. It's cheap in that, I don't recall that being the case. But, I mean, we can look at it, I'm not sure that's true. But I mean, that's, I think you're going to have to change it. I don't think you have any choice. I think you're going to have to make some type of accommodation for people to get out of that and go straight across, take a right or a left. I, I just, I think it's too dangerous to do otherwise.
It, it is a condition of the Seven Eleven Randolph Ave. And it specifically mentions, it doesn't put a time on it, it says during the AM rush that they can't go left. Or I believe it's AM, I believe it's during the AM. It's a time-limited prohibition in the, in the, in the conditions for that permit approval. That being said, it was done when Randolph Ave was a four-lane road and and left there might have been more challenging. So I, the Board of Appeals might be open to revisiting in the sense that the road itself has changed significantly since then, and the alternatives could be worse. Um, but I, I do believe it is conditioned, so it's something that we may want to broach with the Board of Appeals as well, if that's, that's a direction to go in. And there would have to be changes from Mastodot as well to accommodate that on the street.
So you'd make that a turning lane in the middle, like further, like, yeah.
Elsewhere on the strip. Correct.
But ladies and gentlemen, I feel your pain. I live on Randolph Ave and I feel sorry for you. My sister lives on Readsville Road, the traffic starts after two o'clock in the afternoon, and it goes all the way down to Cunningham Park sometimes. It's just, the end result, there's just a lot of cars out there. So you took a four-lane highway and you made it one way up, one way down. So they're going somewhere. And it's, 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 I'm sorry to say, and I do feel for you, and I wish I had the answer. I'm not one that goes on a computer to find different ways to go around, I do it the old-fashioned way.
So I, it is a good point from Mr. Driscoll. I think the, the apps, as, as we mentioned with some of the folks when they came in, um, we don't have the ability to tell Google Maps, but Mastodot does have communication with them. And so they should communicate changes to traffic patterns to the Google and, I don't know, Waze. I guess Waze is Google, isn't it, and some of the other apps. Um, but before we get off this topic, and I know we've got a big agenda, um, but I do, I do think it would be helpful to maybe come up with a couple of things that we could at least look at and then come back in, uh, at our next meeting to address. Um, so one thing that the, uh, that our neighbors on Clifton Road brought up to me, which I found, um, you know, may help with the volume a little bit, is the, is the idea that folks are coming up on Pleasant. And then, rather than turning left on Randolph because it's blocked up, they go past Randolph and then turn left onto Clifton. And so that's been, that's been the source of significant traffic, I think, for me, with Travis and others. So part of me, when we talk about no-left-hand turns, part of me wonders if we put, had some sort of a, either a sign or even like some of the plastic barrier poles that they have that would just prevent any left turns from Randolph onto those four streets. Now, we'd have to ask the neighbors there if that's something that they would want to sort of permanently give up. Um, or if it's a diet, you know, if it's, if it's a plan where we just kind of see how it works, um, that might be a solution, and that is our road there. So we would have the ability, um, to do something like that. I would imagine it'd be quicker to get at least some no-left-hand turns from Rand, on Randolph. So can I actually share my screen here? It's, I feel like it's
You should be able to.
Maps while we're talking. Um, so right now, what we've got is, um, folks that are coming down Pleasant from East Milton, and they can't make this turn here, they go straight on Readsville and then turn on Clifton or Martin or one of these streets, and then down Highland to basically get around the backup queue that's waiting to turn left onto twenty-eight. So if there was a way, and that's, I think, Travis, you said it was like twenty-five percent of the traffic or something. You said it was a pretty big number of cars that are doing
It's, yeah. Like, we would get
Yeah, come on up to the microphone. And I saw somebody shaking their head, so I'd love, we'd take it from you also, if you have
So we would get traffic all the time, coming up Readsville from, say, Canton Ave and making a right down Clifton. That, that
That's been
That's been consistent for thirteen years. Has it increased a little bit? Yeah, sure, we've seen it, because we stand out there and watch it. But what we, what we see more than anything is that people are lined up in the left-hand lane on Readsville Road going towards Canton, waiting to make a left onto Clifton, across two lanes. And now you have the people that are trying to come up Readsville to make a right onto Randolph. And you have the people on the left-hand lane trying to go down Readsville to get towards East Milton Square. So now these people are lining up on Readsville, and people are bombing around them. And they're just all trying to make a left down to Clifton. And when we look at, I've done it a few times, where you try to map it out on Google Maps, it's a savings of four to five minutes. So it's how do we adjust and make it more difficult for them to take four extra minutes to wait in line to get onto Randolph Ave versus not? And so whatever suggestions that you guys come up with, maybe an action is to talk to Mastodot, how they can handle localities versus state roads. And if they, because this is a state road change that's affecting a locality, if they can support in that communication with those technology companies also.
Thank you. I see Mr. Wells has his hand up.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just want to remember that, because I've seen this exercise so many times, that for every action is a reaction. And to Mr. Gregory, to the point right there, you cut four seconds, you take. And the other thing on, if you would, I think on twenty-eight, Readsville is still part of twenty-eight with regard to signage. So I think if we were to look at any type of change there, they'd want to weigh in on this. I don't think the Traffic Commission would recommend it to us on their own without some way in from that. I know that when we put that Hawk Light at the base of, the Hawk Light is the overhead double flash at the base of the hospital entrance, Mastodot weighed in on that. Um, so just a thought, I, I, I don't think, and even what I suggested may not be the fit that works, but I think this is going to take some bit of tweaking so that you want to re-educate or deter the volume that you're going to get hit with every day. Because these, as we know, these people are going to go home, they're not going to stop driving, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to commute. To try to get them, as I said earlier, to try and force them to stay on, on the main road. And that, just the final point to Mr. Gregory is that, remember, on that turn, you've got to leave the residents who do live on these streets the ability to get home. That's, that's like a very important thing that we have to be able to do here, so.
Sure.
I do, I, I will say, like, this one last request, Mr. Chair, because I, I, when I did meet with Clifton, I think that they had been told by the Traffic Commission chair that they didn't want to meet for six weeks. I don't, I don't think we can wait six weeks. I think the Traffic Commission needs to be present on the eighth. I think they need to start having some communication and conversation between our engineers and our traffic people and Mastodot to try and look at all of this so that we can address it. I mean, I know there's no magic wand to make it all go away, but to try and make it a lot more amenable, particularly just those that are carrying. We, we know Randolph Ave is safe, but we want to make sure that we're making life totally intolerable for those, these people on these side streets, so that's, that's my
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
I can tell I've, I've spent a lot on this, sorry.
That's okay. I, I do believe that is the point of this, is to try to make this safer. Uh, Mr. Driscoll, quickly, and then we did have a neighbor that wanted to make a comment, and I see a hand up online.
What about old-fashioned police work? Have policemen there at the height of the traffic and get the cars through the intersections like they did at first when they did the pilot? See how fast
I think it's a good question.
See if that moves the traffic a lot faster?
Or at least encourages people to behave nicely.
Yeah.
Yes, we'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, uh, my name's Mallory Quinn, I live at nineteen Clifton. Um, I just want to sort of comment from a generation of people who uses a map all the time. Uh, my husband and I joke with him, but he uses it to get to the fruit center every day. It's just a thing, you know, my age and younger, everybody uses the map. And if it's saving you four minutes, five minutes, seven minutes, they're taking it. So I, I just want to be like, really cognizant of the fact that we really have to put some sort of measures in place that can be, can speak to those map apps. Um, and I know Mastodot has the ability to do that. Um, I'm from Mansfield, Massachusetts originally, home of the Tweeter Center. And, uh, we, the police and Mastodot And we, the police and Mast dot have sort of worked together to shut down some roads in that area during concert times. It's not every day, but I know the capability is there. I am very cautious about things that are going to punish the residents. I, I want to come up with something, but you know, I myself take a left out of Clifton to get to Glover every day and that would be a pretty big impedance on me doing that back and forth to do that, to, to use the permanent barriers.
The permanent barriers, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. If there was a no turn sign though, what I'm thinking is that you still would be able to make the left because it doesn't, the no turn sign would be on, from Reed's Dale onto Clifton.
Right.
Right? So you would be able to make your left out on to Reed's Dale.
Yep.
It was just, it'd just be that if you were coming back from the fruit center via, you know, or if you were coming back from Cala Cotton Glover, if you had to get there instead of, or Cala Cotton Cunningham instead of Glover, then you wouldn't be able to turn left onto Clifton from Reed's Dale, from, per the sign. But if we had, so if we had no left-hand turn signs, it would allow you to turn left out of your street. It wouldn't allow you to turn left onto your street from Reed's Dale. But I think importantly, that, that sign data would then go into the, the apps, right? So that if you had, and again, I'm just gonna share my screen because I'm like Gen X, so I like maps, but I don't need them all the time. So if you had that happening, that there would be no way for somebody who is trying to skip this left-hand turn to do that unless they wanted to go all the way down to Canton, turn left and then come all the way back on Highland, which surely would take more than four minutes. So I'm thinking that if you had those no left-hand turn signs there.
It could be time restricted potentially.
It could be time restricted too. That's true. We could just have no left-hand turns during the, during rush hour commute. And I think to Mr. Driscoll's point, had some increased enforcement with MPD presence. I think that could at least, you know, in the meantime, be helpful.
Yeah. I'd love to try something.
Yes, yeah, we all would. And that's why we're spending a lot of time on this.
That sounds helpful to me.
It's, what, what can we come do together, together to, to try something out? What are we gonna, they have a pilot, we gotta think of something.
Yeah.
Pilot something.
Yeah.
If it doesn't work, we get resident feedback, we could always adjust.
Yeah.
Plus the town has to be careful, the winter's coming and all this salting operations on Randolph Ave. So those trucks are gonna be stuck in traffic. You know what I mean? There's a lot of pluses to this and I see a lot of downfalls too. Because I've seen snowstorms, like on a, those sneak snowstorms, traffic's backed up the lower mills and that's when the road was four lanes. You know what I'm just saying?
Yep.
The salting operation's right there for the town and they're gonna be stuck in traffic. Reed's Dale Road.
Just to get in and out.
Pleasant Street.
So. So.
It'll take some final thoughts from the members and then we do need to move on because we have.
Just, just in terms of timeline, which might be helpful. The Traffic Commission has already plugged a placeholder for December 3rd as their next meeting.
Okay.
We do have, as Mr. Wells mentioned, the December 8th meeting with Mast dot. On our calendar, we had December 2nd as our tentative date. Perhaps it would make more sense for the Select Board to meet December 9th.
Yes, I think that's right.
Rather than December 2nd and in the wake of both Traffic Commission having a chance and that December 8th meeting.
What can we do to, I'm thinking that we should be working on things before those dates. With the suggestions, like what's our feedback like with Mast dot right now? If we're sending them resident concerns, talking about possibilities, I would rather they came to either 12/8 meeting or any of these meetings that are upcoming with our concerns already in place, so that they come with solutions. Let us know, can we do the no turn signs? What can we do during certain hours of, of operation instead of us presenting it to them again three weeks from now?
So these roads are Milton's roads. So from Reed's Dale to Highland, they're, they're Milton's roads for control. We, in an internal conversation with Mast dot, flagged that we might be looking at changes. Their feedback was that they understood that that might be necessary, you know, and from a purely engineering perspective, it's a pilot, you don't want to change the inputs during it, but I think we would want to be responsive here to things that we're seeing. So I think, my view would be with an intention of having recommendations for the Select Board to take up and approve or not approve on the 9th. So not coming here for a chance, coming in with recommendations for the Select Board to say, yes, do that.
So if these are our roads, then in the meantime, can we meet with the Police Chief and Traffic Commission before that so that this is an ongoing and we're not just letting this sit for the next two or three weeks?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest, I don't even think we need to meet with. I think we can just ask Mr. Milano. And I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Wells, I see your hand up, but I just want to make this quick point. We could ask the Police Chief to look into and report back on increased enforcement and both on, I, I want to acknowledge, we had folks from Highland here that were talking about this as well and these other streets. I think it's important. I know that police can't be everywhere all the time, but they can be somewhere sometimes. And so I think we should have a concerted effort to particularly, given the safety concerns with some of the aggression that we've seen. I think nothing cools the blood quicker than having a, having a cop car around, usually. Actually, sometimes it works the other way. Mr. Wells, you want to chime in real quick before we move on?
Yeah, I'm gonna help you a little bit in this. So I'm gonna make a motion to, that we ask, Mr. Milano, to ask the chief to start with some directed patrols on the Hillside Highland neighborhood, radar patrols. And also I realize Clifton and the others are more of a volume thing, the same thing with the visible presence, particularly in the PM commute, when they can do it. And with directed patrols, they can create it by computer with designated times and locations. I think that's something we could start right away. And then my final point to, to Mr. Daly, just procedurally, the Traffic Commission is our investigator, but like they're the subject matter experts, sort of the Traffic Commission, so they use, I'm happy they're meeting first, let them hear all of this, let's weigh in, Public Safety, Public Works, all of them. And then come to the Mast dot meeting, let them weigh in with Mast dot, what they think they can do to help on this overall project. And then we can hopefully make a vote quickly on the 9th. If that, if that, because that's usually, the, the Traffic Commission, usually we, we vote their, we're not usually, lawfully, we vote their recommendations. Anything the Traffic Commission passes or recommends does become real in reality until we vote it, that we're the, they're our investigative body to do that.
But I don't know that we need a motion for that, Mr. Wells. I'm also not sure where the motion ended, so we can just.
So what do I, I'm gonna ask.
We can just instruct Mr. Milano to do that, I think, with the, unless there's dissent here, which I don't think that there is, we'll.
No, I'm fine, I'm fine with that if everybody else is. I just think that that's something we can start tonight and have Mr. Milano speak. They know that, I've had personally several conversations with them already, like they know, they know what's going on here. But I think for the residents that are here tonight and for this problem, this is something he has to tackle, they have to tackle like aggressively starting tomorrow, actually yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. I see one more hand up, so I'll take the comment from Nadine Hannah and then I think we're, will be resolved to move along. But Ms. Hannah, can you unmute and just introduce yourself quickly? And you have the floor.
Hi, thank you very much. Nadine Hannah, Levens Stafford Road, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. Thank you guys for all of the diligence and attention that you are providing collectively towards these issues that are impacting our neighborhood and our town as a whole. We can't express our gratitude enough for that. Thank you, especially considering how much you're willing to continue moving forward. I know Bart spoke earlier and I just wanted to add on one more piece of information that I think he forgot to include, which is that with the incoming memory care facility on Highland, we have a projected, I think, additional 2,000 trips weekly, vehicular trips anticipated to come through our neighborhood, specifically through Stafford, to, you know, to and from that facility. Just to put that into your, your notes, that was more of a planning board conversation than Select Board. And there is a study that, you know, they provided that could back that up. If you need it, we can probably get that for you. Additionally, if, if just somewhere in this conversation, if we could ask you to either include or separately look at specifically the commercial hospital traffic that definitely Stafford is, bears the burden of. We have ambulances, not, not in emergency state ambulances, not with the lights on. We have ambulance kind of returning from the hospital down Stafford. We've got the air gas tanker using Stafford to go into the, to the Highland entrance of the hospital to, to deliver their, you know, where their silos are. We've got their, you know, WB Mason, we've got their uniform company. I could tell you like the day and time that it comes down. It's regular 11, between 12:30, 1:30 and I think Thursdays it is. And we do have an extensive photo, you know, an album that we kind of Google album, we put together during memory care, conversations that we could provide. That thing's gone cold since, since everything was put through on that end, but there is still extensive, you know, picture evidence of all of the trucks using Stafford Road as their, you know, kind of their back door to the hospital. And the number of trips that we've, that we have witnessed in person has increased since the road diet, which I'm a fan of the road diet. I like that it's, you know, the 28th's moving slower. I, I want safety in our, in our town and I would love reduced traffic across all the ladder streets. So outside of whatever, however the conversation goes, whether it's do not enters or left turn only or any of that, if during these conversations, if there's an opportunity to address mitigating hospital traffic, you know, not, no longer using Stafford in that way, we would really, really appreciate that chance. And here comes my four-year-old, so thank you very much and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. So I believe that, Mr. Milano, we have a pretty good schedule of, of requests here. So we'll go to MPD, ask them for increased enforcement in the, in the area. We have the December 3rd Traffic Commission meeting, the December 8th Mast dot meeting. I agree with you to move, and we can discuss that when we're getting to Select Board agenda, but move Select Board to December 9th, I think, then, and we'll have this as an agenda item there. In the meantime, I invite folks to continue to provide us with emails, photos, videos, other thoughts that you have. Make sure that you're sending them to the, Mr. Milano, could you remind us of the email address also to Mast dot? You don't have to memorize, I don't either.
I don't, I'm sorry.
Well, you can always email sb@miltonma.gov and we can make sure that it will get on to Mast dot's radar as well. We forward all those communications. So thank you for your patience with this. I really want to just commend everyone on the tone of the conversation. Traffic is, as you guys know firsthand, something that really gets the blood up. And we are really working hard here to try to make Milton as safe as possible for everybody, not just on 28, but on the, on the streets that have butted and everywhere else in town as well. So thank you for coming out, for your, for your patience with us. Moving along to item six, we have our fiscal year 2026 stormwater fee. Ms. Hegarty, okay, you're back. I was just gonna shout through the computer to, to rejoin us.
I'm here.
Great.
All right, sorry, give me one moment here, Mr. Chair.
That's all right.
Okay. Thank you. So tonight, we're seeking approval for the fiscal 26 stormwater fee. This is a separate enterprise fund which charges a fee based on the square footage of impervious surface area on a given property. The fee is, is generated based on how much the budget changes are over year. So fiscal 25's budget was a $1.14 million budget. In fiscal 26, we had an increase of $114,000 to bring that budget to $1.25 million, which is about a 10% increase. This increase is driven almost entirely, but by what we expect to be a temporary increase. Over the past several years, our, the materials cleared out of storm drains have built up over time at DPW. So we had a, an increase in the appropriation for fiscal 26 to allow DPW contracts to have that trucked out to clear up the yard a little bit. So it was an, it's an ongoing project that they're working on at the yard. So it accounts for a little bit of an outlier increase on the stormwater fee. So overall, the budget increased 25, from 25 to 26, about 10%. Our impervious surface area increased slightly as well. And this is measured on single-family homes, commercial properties, as well as tax exempt institutions, Milton Hospital, Milton Academy, Cari College, they all are required to pay the stormwater fee, even though they're exempt. Our fiscal 26 rate will be $2.84 per 100 square feet on a property of impervious surface area. This chart here gives the overall changes going from top to the bottom. So top is all residential properties, tiers one through 4.3 are residential, less than 15, about 16,000 square feet. So for example, a single-family home with less than 2,075, 2,075 square feet of impervious surface area, their stormwater fee was $45. This year it'll be $49. So that's about a 9% increase across the tiers. And then anything over that 15,896 square feet gets charged at $2.84 for 100 square foot of impervious surface area. So those larger institutions, as well as town and schools, all pay into the stormwater fee. And that gives a gist of where, where the fee is and what folks should expect for their stormwater bill in 26. I'll note that the stormwater enterprise funds, a number of items, whether it's drain work, maintenance, proven projects, our streets, our street sweeping program, yard waste is a, is a big component of the stormwater budget. So all those go into comprising that as well as paying for salaries of DPW staff. And then lastly, we just like to share that we calculate this on a given year with apps and systems that we have. Right now, we're using what's called Near Map, which gives us three to four aerial views of the town every year. So our GIS administrator, Alan Bishop, will go in and make updates based on additions, renovations, new construction. So all of that is captured on a year-by-year basis. And the Near Map thing is pretty cool. So this is September 28th, 2025. You can see the East Milton Fire Station starting to come out of the ground there. So we get three to four updates of the entire town on an annual basis. That helps get us to our impervious surface area amounts. I went through that a little quickly, but I just, that's the overall. So again, the budget increase 10%, which leads to about a 9% increase on the stormwater fee. And I'll go back to the table to show what that increase will be across the different tiers. And we're seeking approval for the stormwater fee of $2.84 per 100 square feet of surface area.
Okay, questions from the members? So just to be clear on this rate code here, anything that's commercial falls under the commercial line. The residentials are all the tiers one to 4.3. Okay. Well, if any question, I don't see any questions, so I'll take a motion from the, the board, if anyone wants to make one.
I will move to approve the fiscal year 2026 stormwater fee as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Made by Mr. Daly, seconded by Mr. Wells. We have remote members, so this will be a roll call vote. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Hegarty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our next item, I believe, I have to go through a little bit of a rigmarole. We have a vote on a residential factor for fiscal year 26, real and personal property tax rates. Wait, I, no, I skipped one. Public hearing for property tax classification under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56. I am going to, we're gonna have a public hearing on this, so I will declare the public hearing open. And the purpose of this public hearing is to hear public comment on and to solicit comment from the public on how the fiscal year 26 property tax levy shall be distributed among the residential, open space, commercial and industrial classes of property. We will begin with a presentation from the Board of Assessors, from Chair Brian Cronin and from Chief Appraiser Charlie O'Shea. We will then provide an opportunity for Select Board members to ask questions and also allow for the public to comment. Then we will close the public hearing before voting on the tax classification. So I would like to invite you gentlemen to join us up at the table.
Curtis as well, who I didn't include in the document, sorry.
Please.
Charlie.
Curtis also.
Curtis Ross from the Assessors Office.
Hi, good evening. Brian Cronin, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, Chair of the Board of Assessors. Curtis Ross, who is our appraiser, the man on the ground. And Charlie, Charlie O'Shea, our Chief Appraiser. So I just want to open by saying that home values still continue to be strong with the residential, single-family residential home at $1,081,000 is the average. And we had a good year for new growth, about one, one and a half million. in new growth. So, um, there's a lot of projects going on in town. So Charlie, why don't you, uh, run through the slides?
Sure.
Go from there.
And, uh, Nick, you're gonna run the slides?
Yep.
All right.
So, um, our goal stuff for today, first of all, will be to give you an idea of just how values have changed from fiscal 2025 to '26. And then we're gonna talk about reviewing options for shifting the tax rate itself. Um, the first thing you'll see here is, um, a pie chart, and you'll notice on the, uh, left-hand side, the property tax pays for about 69% of the budget. Pardon my voice, by the way. Uh, and, you know, in addition to that, you'll see some collections that the town makes as well to, uh, make the full budget in that case. Um, so assessed values have been moving up, and, um, Mr. Cronin just happened to mention that. Uh, but basically, uh, you'll see that under fiscal 2025, we were about 8.59 billion. And, uh, then fiscal '26, we moved to about 9.01 billion. So, uh, we went up about 5% uh, in residential values in that case there. And, uh, the next, uh, slide will be commercial. Uh, the commercial, we went from 329 million, obviously less, uh, parcels, to 417 million. And, and I'm just kind of rounding in that case there. Um, so, uh, both went up, one went up about 5%, one went up, uh, just under 4% in that case there. I'll have Nick go to the next one here. So, um, as, uh, uh, Mr. Cronin said, um, growth has been pretty good to us, um, so far. There's been a lot happening. Um, and Curtis, you could probably say more about it than I can, but, um, you know, Curtis is the one that's been, is, is, uh, Mr. Cronin said, uh, you know, feet on the, on the ground, understanding, getting into the properties, et cetera.
Yes, yes. So it's been a team effort. Uh, the Milton residents have been extremely helpful and good to us, allowing us to inspect their property. Any renovations that are completed, we'll go out there, pick the, pick that up for new growth. Uh, we was able to pick up, a large chunk of our new growth comes from condominiums, particularly the Ice House project on our 48547 Blue Hills Parkway, as well as the remaining, uh, properties we picked up on Walcott Woods Lane. So everything, I mean, we're go, I mean, we have a good projection going forward. We have major projects going on, such as Fort Franklin, um, 728 Randolph, um, Avenue. So it's been, we, like Charlie said, I mean, we're in good standing right now, so. And again, like I said, the Milton residents have been extremely helpful and cooperative in terms of allowing us, and we understand, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult, particularly in the morning and afternoon, you know, for us to come out and do inspections, but everything's been going very well.
If I could just add and add a, a little bit further context, I think the other element I just, I don't want to lose sight of is, a lot of this growth does come from the utilities. So ever so, it's the National Grid, because they've been busy and doing a lot of work, um, it's not quite a third, it's probably about 300, $400,000 of this new growth value is in, um, personal property for the utilities. So it's, it's not just the construction that you can see, um, necessarily, but it's stuff going on in underground and overhead, um, and pole work that they're doing. The other thing, Charlie, when the number went in, DOR, I had noticed that we were kind of, a little bit of an outlier on growth to share, I believe, um, that was some of the feedback you got.
They did, but, um, you know, we always have to meet with the Department of Revenue, and, you know, typically it's Curtis and myself, and they do question everything. This is not a revaluation year, which happens every five years, but every year we actually have to value every property. So, um, that, every year, we kind of do the same thing and, you know, take on the, the next set of sales. Uh, but as Nick said, um, they're called 504 appraisals for the, um, uh, the utilities. And again, they do, you know, what's happening, they're, they're putting in, you know, replacing things, putting in new, uh, property. Um, they have property that's work in progress, et cetera, and they report all that to us, and then we, uh, can use that as property growth. Um, so this next, um, uh, table here is basically the tax shift, and this is kind of what we were talking about here. Um, so on November 6th, uh, Brian and, you know, Chairman of our, uh, Board of Assessors, along with our, uh, other assessors, Robert Reitz and, um, William Bennett, uh, met. And in this case, what they did is they, uh, voted and they chose option number one. So you'll see down at the bottom, left-hand side in the blue, uh, the .9771. And basically, uh, what we're hoping will happen is, um, that we'll be able to put a residential factor, um, of .9771. And then if you see up at the top, we'll have a 1.5 shift. So we basically have a split rate, and, you know, again, we're gonna continue with the split rate. What it will do is, it'll give a residential tax rate, and again, I'm on the left-hand side right now, of $11.81, and a commercial tax rate of $18.13. So if you wanted to kind of understand what that means, while your average single-family tax would be $12,769, and average commercial tax would be $20,511. And I think it's important to realize that, um, the override, uh, along with the revaluation, are going into these numbers. So, um, the biggest difference that you're gonna see is the next step down, um, which would be three from the bottom, is the average single-family tax rate, uh, change is gonna be about 11.9%. Uh, the chunk of that is gonna be the override itself, uh, with, with the, uh, revaluation probably adding about 3%, somewhere in that range there. Um, and you'll see the average commercial change will be 10.6%. So, um, you know, we understand that it's a, not a small change. I, I kept this table tight because this is the same table that the Board of Assessors also, uh, voted on. But, you know, um, meeting with Nick and, uh, meeting with Amy Dexter, et cetera, you know, we're trying to make the budget work. And in this case here, these numbers are, uh, basically what makes the, the budget And I don't think we're expecting anyone to vote at the moment, so. Um, so average single-family tax bill, you'll see on the right-hand side, um, how the bills have worked. So, um, Mr. Cronin has always, uh, as long as I've been here, tried to keep an increase to about 3% whenever possible. And, uh, I'm not sure about 2018, I wasn't here, but that was a override. Yeah. So, uh, besides that, I've been here for the last four times, I think, and, uh, Mr. Cronin and the board have tried to keep it to about a 3% change. But in 2026, uh, being the residential difference, uh, it'll be about an 11.9%. So basically about a 12% change for people's taxes. So, uh, at this point, I, I don't think I'm the person that should move, uh, for this, but, uh, this is where it comes down to a, a vote.
Well, I think we'll have, uh, discussion first and then, and then the motion. So I'll turn it over to members for questions, for...
I have none.
Just keeping an eye on, I can't see. Um, Mr. Daley, any questions?
None for me. I, I went through what was, uh, presented in our packet, and I'm comfortable with the option one, that was suggested by the board.
Uh, I'm comfortable with it too, but I, I do have, um, I think it's probably one question. Um, so the la, last, uh, town meeting in, uh, in October, and then also the town meeting in May, I think, we voted in two different changes to allow, uh, exemptions for property taxes for some of our, um, you know, seniors with very low income and veterans. Have you looked at what that effect is gonna be sort of downstream from, from this year? Is that going to change the equation around?
It, it is. Um, we, at the moment, we actually haven't, um, put like a number on there because we, we actually will be sending out letters to everyone that got an exemption last year to remind them to bring their, you know, uh, information back in, because they do have to either physically or, you know, mail it to us, one or the other. Something else, and I might as well make a point on this now, um, we had a meeting today about people that are doing work off in, in order to reduce their taxes, and we don't even have a full 25, uh, member group at the moment. So there are some openings there. And, um, one thing that we, we found out today, and it was, um, thanks to our treasurer, uh, is that somebody could have, if they, if they weren't in good condition or whatever, they could actually have someone else come in as a proxy and do the work for them. Um, so, you know, people that are having a difficult time. Uh, but besides that, you know, we, we've, um, uh, have the ability now to, um, basically wipe out one car's worth of, um, taxes for, uh, veterans. And, you know, we're bringing the veterans in now, we're gonna be talking about some other items like a, et cetera. So, um, you, you know, uh, Mr. Milano has kind of talked to us about, let's get everything moving to give people, uh, you know, a chance to survive, you know, and, uh, be comfortable.
So Charlie, for the work-off program, where do people find more information about that? Is that council on aging or the Assessors Office?
Uh, so it'd be council on aging. Uh, if they did, you know, call the assessors, we could be helpful to them, but, uh, basically council on aging would get things started. And, uh, the money's gonna be coming from the levy, from, uh, the assessors' levy. Uh, and, uh, so, you know, they always vote that in, they're, they're happy to do it. Um, same with all of the exemptions that come through as well. And, uh, again, you know, what we're looking to do is maybe, uh, try to increase some of the exemptions with, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for there? The, uh, circuit breaker, et cetera.
Yep. So the home rule petition is in front of the legislature now for the senior circuit breaker tax exemption. Um, and all of those exemptions, as Charlie was mentioning, are budgeted separately, so they're already budgeted within the levy, and it wouldn't, um, affect these numbers as much because it's kind of built into how we build the budget. We make sure that we're setting aside enough money into the overlay that's under the control of the Board of Assessors for paying out exemptions, as well as tax abatements in case of companies and entities file abatements. So there's a, there's a set aside a reserve to fund, um, both the exemptions and potential abatements that might come down, um, from taxpayers.
Uh, last chance saloon for anyone who has questions about this. Um, but seeing none, I will, uh, will clo, I will move to close the public hearing first.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wells. Um, and then, uh, do we take a vote on the closure?
Close the public hearing and vote, and then we can vote it.
And then, uh, so that'll be a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Hegarty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Uh, and then I will take a motion on the...
Make a motion, Mr. Chair, to, um, approve, as, to approve the increases as recommended by the Board of Assessors to the select board, if that's okay.
Certainly.
I can't read, it's too small, I can't read the motion. It's on my phone, so I can't read it.
I think you've gotten there, to a minimum residential factor of .9771.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. Uh, further discussion, this is again a roll call vote. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Hegarty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in and for sharing.
Thanks. Thank you.
Now, uh, we will go to, um, item number eight, vote on a residential factor for fiscal year 2026 real and personal property tax. What's that? We just, that's the one we just did. Uh, oh, I'm very anxious to have this discussion. Number nine, select board letter to MBTA dated September 10th, 2025, requesting an update on the Mattapan Line Transformation Project. Lack of response by MBTA. Mr. Milano.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna recuse myself from the conversation to remove the appearance for conflict of interest.
Thank you, Ms. Hegarty.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so we had discussed this. Uh, so for background, um, the board had submitted a letter to the MBTA on September 10th asking for an update and additional information on the Mattapan Line Transformation Project. Um, we got an immediate confirmation that they had received it, um, but didn't really have much information other than they hope to announce something in a few weeks. Um, so prior to the town meeting, at one of our meetings, I provided that update to the board that, um, they expected to provide us some information in a few weeks. That was October 20, excuse me, 27th. Um, I haven't received any further updates. I've drafted a, a further letter, um, that, um, notes our upcoming meeting schedule, although that might be slightly tweaked now, um, and requesting that, uh, they provide a, a comprehensive update prior to our upcoming meeting on, um, December 2nd. So just to reiterate the request, um, I had received a request, um, from the press on this, but, um, I didn't see, um, anything printed there, so we didn't get a seat, a chance to see what MBTA's public comment might have been. Um, but as of now, there's no additional information been provided to the town. Um, and I don't, I need, other than another letter requesting a further update with a more discreet timeline, um, I would suggest that's a good next step, and we'll follow up through other, um, pathways as well.
Thoughts from the members?
Do we have any other methods of direct communication with the MBTA?
I have been in touch with legislative, um, affairs staff. Um, that would be our normal, um, operating procedure in terms of any of these executive agencies. They all have staff, um, delegated to, to work with cities and towns and to the legislature. So that's, that's our normal, um, means of communication. Um, that's who, uh, I worked with through this, um, and that's where I don't have any further updates at this time.
Do we have any thoughts on perhaps going through our legislative, um, representatives? Not only, uh, Mr. Wells and Mr. Driscoll, but perhaps, uh, Representative Fuker Reed?
Uh, I, I would think so. Um, Mr. Wells, you have your hand up, you wanna respond to that?
Well, uh, we're on this regularly. We, um, I wanna give some credit to the, to the legislative staff who, uh, are constantly on this, and just, uh, a little bit of update today is, uh, some of you may recall, this originated before I was, well, started just as I arrived, um, Senator Driscoll included it as an earmark in the Senate, and today, um, this resolution was passed in the House and will go to the governor, which will look at the formula and create a committee to readdress the formulas for what a community pays in annual MBTA assessments. And as Mr. Milano knows well, we are paying double what some cities, twice our size, are paying. Um, and that, clearly, there is some understanding this needs to be worked. I will say, um, one of the things, to Mr. Daley's point, that we're able to follow openly is their budget. So we're able to see what they're funding, what they're not funding. And as of today, I see nothing presently or on the horizon where any money's being targeted towards this issue. And, um, as Mr. Milano will remember, and I believe Mr. Zol, you as well, at the beginning of each term, just look at the frustration that we had over a staircase in Milton Village for at least five years. So we're on this aggressively, but this is a, a mountain, but we will not let go of it.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Uh, other thoughts from the members?
Uh, I have to, uh, say that I'm really very disappointed, uh, in the MBTA's lack of, uh, response on this. I feel like we've been more than patient, uh, around the, this line transformation. I, I think, um, Mr. Daley, your observation about including, um, Representative Fuker Reed in this effort, who represents not only part of Milton that's serviced by the trolley, but also, uh, Mattapan and Dorchester, I believe, as well. I think it's, um, you know, we were under the microscope for, for a year and a half around the MBTA Communities Act. Uh, and now that, uh, we are compliant, um, to have our repeated requests for updates, not even beyond updates, um, essentially ignored, I think, is, uh, it, it's, it leaves me a little bit astounded, to be frankly honest, uh, with you. And I appreciate, Mr. Wells, the work that you and Senator Driscoll are doing on the, um, recalibration of those fees. But on this particular, uh... But on this particular letter, Mr. Milano, I do think it would be worth maybe asking all of our representatives and senators if they wanted, if they were interested in cosigning it with us and to add a little bit, maybe more heft to it. And I don't know if there's other ways that we can potentially strengthen it.
I think there's also a point to be made about the new developments that we have going, not only at Two Elliott, but perhaps the Wharf that's happening. And those are all along the Mattapan Trolley line. So not only is this a follow-up to the MBTA Communities Act, which, as you stated, Chair, we were very much under the microscope for, and now we're in compliance and we've gotten no response, and if not also come to us, you know, in any way to the table, we're also doing development along the line in terms of growth for our community, which really requires not only just an upgrade, but also maintenance of that line. So it's particularly important for us, as we are making changes, that there are some changes that are out of our control that we do need addressed if we're going to have that area be developed.
Don't use any curse words in this. But I think unless there's dissent here in the ranks, I think you've got an instruction to--
Okay.
--send another letter. Reach out first to our representatives' offices to see if they'd be interested in cosigning or weighing in on the letter. And I would give them till the ninth. Part of me was thinking, maybe don't tell them we moved the date to keep them, you know, to keep them on their toes. Give them to the ninth. But I would state somewhere in that letter that if there is no response to this, you know, by the ninth, I think we'll have to, you know, consider other options about how to, you know, compel work on a historically neglected mode of transport. When the governor and legislature are talking about moving us to a car, you know, like less car, more mass transit, the failure to address this, you know, repeatedly is something that I feel needs attention. And I would add, too, it's not just us that's affected by this. It's Mattapan, it's Dorchester--
Sure.
--people, the other folks that commute from different areas. So do you feel adequately informed on that, then, Mr. Milano?
Yes, if the board wants the letter to come from you as a board, I'd suggest you vote to authorize myself and the chair maybe to finalize it and send it so that we have that authorization to submit it officially.
Move to have a new letter drafted to the MBTA with some updates from the town administrator and the chair.
Second.
Okay. Made by Mr. Daley, seconded by Mr. Driscoll. Any further discussion? I know Ms. Hegarty has recused herself for this. So Mr. Wells? Yes, you have your hand up.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Sir. I think, given my own position here, and I'm thinking of my colleague, Mr., I think this letter maybe should draft this letter and have it signed by you, Mr. Chair. So it doesn't look like it's missing signatures and just have you sign it as chair on behalf of the board. If you--
I hear what you're saying.
It might drift the way I'm thinking here. It would, I think it might be a suit of, that way, you know, it's sending the message, but it doesn't look like it's a not unanimous support. And I don't want to, I would have to abstain, that's why I think I'd rather have you just sign it, if it's okay with the other members.
That's fine. Is that a friendly amendment to the--
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, I think that is fine all around. So we have a motion for Mr. Milano and myself to draft and then me to sign a letter to the MBTA on this topic.
Charlie, do you want to answer?
Yes, Mr. Driscoll.
Can you also ask the bus, how many buses they run in Milton? Because the one on Ringo Fabius would be every half hour, now it's down to an hour. And I haven't seen one on Reed's Road in a long, long time.
The 240?
That goes from Ashmont down to Reed's Road. I haven't seen an MBTA bus.
Yeah, I believe they had merged one line. I can get an update on what they're running right now.
Yeah, just--
Let's get that information. I don't know if we've glued that in this particular letter, but--
It should be available. If it's not, we'll follow up.
Yeah. Okay. So motion's been made and seconded. This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Wells?
Sorry, I'm trying to unmute. Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great. Mr. Milano, our next item is the East Milton Fire Station Visioning Session. And I know that many of members were present for that, but perhaps you want to give us a quick recap?
Sure, thanks. I included in the packet as well the--
Oh, and Ms. Hegarty--
A memo--
Okay, she's back.
Memo from MAPC, which summarized kind of what they heard as takeaways. And ignore the typo where they called us Milford. So we'll ignore that one for now. But yes, so I include in the packet some of the takeaways that MAPC heard. I think that is a good summary. I think, I thought it was helpful to hear the kind of the conversation focused on, I think, keeping the structure and, you know, referring to the history, often, you know, private use, it sounded like a lease was preferred versus an outright purchase. And then a lot of conversation about uses. So I think they summarized some of the feedback. I know, I think all, four of the five members were in attendance. The other thing that I have done, just if it's helpful for the conversation, I distributed it late yesterday, but just pulled together an RFP template to identify kind of areas where decisions need to be made. You know, obviously, the first question is, are we going to go forward to dispose of the property? And then from there, there are cascading questions that follow. So when the board's ready to take that step and have a conversation, the kind of template with the questions is prepared and ready. And I can obviously pull something together for a deeper conversation. But as I said, the MAPC memo, I thought summarized the themes and the overall kind of messages that we heard.
Questions or thoughts from the members? Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I do think that in creating an RFP, you could have both options, an option to lease as well as an option to purchase. Number two, you can according to the condition of either one. The integrity of the structure, the facility of the stuff, you know, the building structure remains intact, similar to how, even though we didn't sell headquarters, the redo of headquarters, the old headquarters, you know, maintained the historical structure integrity of the building. And even though Engine Two isn't as old as Engine One, I think that's something that's important on to the look of East Milton. I think that's one thing. And then I just think maybe we need some, and I don't know, I don't think MAPC is it, maybe some real estate guidance on that if we do make a decision to go either of these What's some of the ideas, you know, how in an RFP, put out advantageous and non-advantageous uses, you know, what's some, including some of those suggestions as the advantageous use? And just my final comment is that, as you heard me say when I was there, when we were there, is we did ask for that $900,000, did get it. Some people may not want to hear it, but I'm a man of my word, and I stated it when town meeting gave us the money to buy that land, that I stand by it now with the disposal of, or the reuse of Engine Two in the best way possible for the town, but still doing it in a way that makes up for that million dollars, almost million dollars that we took to do, to get it. That's pretty much all I have. Sorry, that was long-winded, again.
That's all right, Mr. Wells. Ms. Hegarty, you have your hand up?
This is different. I feel like it's like an hour and 40 minutes in, and I haven't really said much in this meeting yet. But I thought, you know, just reading the memo with the results of the hearing, it sounds like there were a lot of good ideas that came out of the visioning session. You know, I think one of the tricky things, I think Member Wells mentioned this, is it's really, it's really tough to understand what the market will bear in a lease situation versus a sale. So I don't know, and I was talking to Mr. Milano about this earlier, and I don't, I don't know that we have this much time, but I would feel really comfortable understanding sort of what, what we should be able to expect and accept based on what the market will bear. But I know, I know we can't get too much into that. But I do, I do like some of the language that I see in the RFP document, the drafts that Mr. Milano circulated. I also think for some of the criteria that we have, that we should state, I believe, I believe it was on the criterion about the facility itself, I think we should, I think we should probably have criteria on how well the proposal would mitigate potential traffic, vehicular traffic to the site. I would be very concerned about that, depending on the use. And I think, you know, if we could prioritize that in the scoring, that if we could prioritize a developer or a lease's means of mitigation of traffic impacts, that'd be great.
Thank you, Member Hegarty. Other comments or thoughts?
Yeah, so I agree with what Member Wells said about the RFP being to lease or buy with both options. In being in the visioning session, the thing that's most difficult is while we may come up with ideas, it does not mean there may be a purchaser or leaser that would deliver on any of those ideas. So I think the RFP gives us the ability to see what is out there, right? What would folks actually want to place into that location? And I don't think we're bound by an RFP to come in that we have to accept any of the offers. The other piece, and I think, Mr. Milano, you mentioned it in your, kind of your assessment you sent to us, is can we do a few things at once in not only preparing an RFP for purchase or lease, but also doing our own assessment and perhaps valuation of the property? What I heard at that visioning session is folks in town wanted to know more about it. The concept of the public-private partnership or the town keeping it, creating something, can we get, or what would be the cost for us to get an assessment for what would it actually cost the town to refurbish, to use, to reestablish, to change anything about that, to make it useful for us? I think that's something we're going to need to present to the town, not only in town meeting, but also our residents, in terms of when we're weighing these options, right? Here's what it is for sale, purchase, here's what it would be if we actually kept it, and here's the impact on our budget and our financial situation in those pieces. So I think that's kind of where I stand, starting to prepare the RFP for purchase or lease with this January 26th, if possible, release date, and maybe some assessment of what the cost would be for us to get an appraisal for potential work if the town wanted to keep it, as long as that's not too exorbitant.
Mr. Driscoll, do you have a--
It would still go before the town meeting, right?
Yes.
So I agree, move it forward, go with the RFP.
Mr. Wells, you have your hand up?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So, Mr. Wells, I don't know if any of the current members on the board, when we purchased East Milton and when we purchased, we have three, three things. We did Discovery School, we did the property purchase in East Milton, and we purchased, if you recall, we had to purchase the property with the Yarcom, no, not the Yarcom, but we have, the crew is now ADA WAF, the landing, because we didn't own it, it was owned by ADA WAF. And there was a gentleman we used, Mr. Milano, were you on board when we brought them in?
I was not.
So, you know, being the records, there was a appraiser that the town, we used him three times. He was excellent. It might behoove us, and it would not be that costly, to have him again and do a, and do a property evaluation on the price of what that might go for, either leased or property. But I know the Fire Station Building Committee did it a long time ago when they were looking at the properties as a whole. I think that might behoove us. I think if you look in the records of the property purchase, Mr. Milano, you will find his name and the company. I know Mr. Zullis knew him very well, and I was very impressed, he did a great job for us. That's why we used him on all three properties. And I think that may help that some of the members' questions that they have tonight with regard to uses and possible value of the property as it is. Would that be amenable to everyone if we were to do that?
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Yeah, I was going to suggest maybe we can ask Mr. Milano, you could figure out who that was, get a quote from him about what that would cost. And then when we come back next, we could--
Should we have enough time by the night?
We should have enough time, I would think--
Yep.
--to vote to approve the appraisal of it. And in the meantime, we'll continue to work to refine this document.
Sure. And I think what would be trickier, I think certainly getting an appraiser to give us a value of the, on the private market, both of a sale or a lease, I think that is, you know, that's done, obviously, all the time in that world. It would be harder, is what Mr. Daley was asking about, in terms of how much it would have cost us to do X, because we don't really know what X is. I mean, we would have, we have some information about the kind of ADA upgrades that we'd have to make. We have some information about some of the materials in the building, but we don't have all the information. So in terms of a quantum of costs, you know, if we're putting up a lot of walls and subdividing the space a ton, more expensive. If we're doing a meeting room like we did behind Town Hall, obviously less expensive. So it's hard to get a quantum of cost, and I don't want to overpromise what I can, what we can deliver on a specific question in terms of if the town were to reuse it in any capacity or to, or if the town were to put money into it, how much would it take to get it into a different kind of condition? I don't have a good way to--
Is there any way to get some sort of general assessment? Not that it would be--
Yeah.
--to turn it into like just a workable space regardless, but just a basic workable space with folks coming in and out of it?
The foundation is functional, it's ADA compliant.
Okay.
Just something general.
Yeah, we can ask around and try to get a sense of a scale of cost to that effect.
Okay. Members happy with that? And then there was, I think, at the, I thought it was an excellent forum, and I thought, I thought that the, you know, the methodology of how to brainstorm was different, but I thought very fun and useful and really did bring a lot of different folks together. The sense that I had leaving that was that there was an appetite to do probably another session similar to that or find some other way to get some community input. I know, you know, there was a comment made that it was, you know, that weren't a lot of young families that were there. It was maybe the grayer set, like myself, that were in attendance. So, you know, I do think prior to the RFP going out in January would be worth thinking about, is there another way to have community inputted on that? And whether that's just having an open session here at a select board meeting or asking for folks to comment online.
Sure. We can, I'll work with the planning staff and think about a way to do that. And one way, as you suggest, might be get the RFP in a more kind of cohesive, coherent package so that folks have something to react to as well and give concrete feedback and suggestions to. But let me work with the planning staff and report back.
Okay.
One question I wanted to discuss or pose, in Nick's RFP questions, he said, were there any uses we wanted to prohibit? I know we're already not zoned for dispensary or marijuana, so that's already out the door. Is there anything else that we need to be concerned about? There wasn't anything in the visioning session where folks said they didn't want anything?
No, they didn't want a nail salon.
No casinos. No nail, no nail salons?
And I tried to, and you'll see it elsewhere in the RFP in terms of the way I try to write the criteria where it was, it would rank uses that would, you know, bring in foot traffic, provide a place for people to gather, rather than a place for people to just conduct a transaction, call it a day. But, so it's more kind of in the verbiage rather than an explicit prohibition on its use, so that it gives the select board to say, okay, this use proposes a cafe, that's what we really want. This use proposes a, an insurance office. That's not kind of the use we want for that space, not to pick on any insurers, especially in the square itself. But just to give a juxtaposition of the kinds of uses that folks were speaking of at the forum in particular.
So East Milton can come out strong and save this building through town meeting and everything, right? It's not a go, right?
Yeah, so yes, to sell or to enter into any-- Yeah, so yes, to sell or to enter into any kind of a long-term lease, the select board will need town meeting approval.
That neighborhood wants to keep and fight for it, it can still be--
At town meeting, they will have a vote at some point, correct?
All right.
And the board will, the board will need a vote to issue the RFP, the board will need to vote to award, an awardee, it'll need to vote to approve a lease agreement, or, so there's, there's going to be multiple steps.
This is just starting a process.
We're just starting, exactly, yep.
Mr. Wells?
Mr. Fawcett, ironic is, we started the fire purchase, it began as a 99-year lease. We wanted a purchase, the seller wanted a lease. I think we negotiated back and forth for probably three months. And in the end, when we had, we had actually committed to leasing it, because it was going to be the best bet we were going to be, at the 12th minute of the 12th hour, the seller changed their mind, decided to sell it to us, which is what we wanted all along. So, that's why I liked that, we didn't, I liked the idea of putting both of them in there in an RFP that we would create, so that you don't know what's, what you're going to get for an offer, but I'd like to expose that we have both advantageous and disadvantageous, lease versus purchase. As Ms. Hagerty said, as Ms. Hagerty said, that, you know, you've got to be limited on what's going to be able to go in there. And if someone's going to pay $800 million for it, they're going to have to have a unique concept, something that fits there, and, you know, because it only has, I think, two pocket spaces, maybe three. So, those are things that will have to uniquely be crafted into developing an RFP for this, so. And you might want, Mr. Milano, when you have a moment, share just a little bit of the concept we got back with both Mr. Daly and Ms. Hagerty and Mr. Driscoll, where we did the, was it an RFQ we did before or an RFI?
Yes, essentially an RFI.
Oh, yeah.
An RFI, yeah. Yeah, because that was one unique concept that I think you need to brief the new members on. So, that's pretty much it.
In the back of my head, I didn't want to necessarily propose it, but I was wondering if an RFI would be good. So, if that had already happened before, that's--
Yeah, we did it. We did, we did it.
Yeah.
We did it. And we got one, it was only one, but to your, to your point, Ms. Hagerty, we weren't, you know, it wasn't a substantive, you know, there's a big difference between an RFI and an RFP where, you know, they can end, I think that some of the proposed thoughts didn't want to show their hand publicly, so someone else would steal their idea from them. So, that's why we did it. But it was the one that we did get was a unique concept, so. That's all. And Mr. Wells, if you would share that with them, that'd be great.
Sure, will do.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Wells. So I think we have, and I just want to say something also to Mr. Driscoll's point. I think the, what we're talking about with the RFP, particularly the preservation of the, of the historic nature of the building, I think that would be something as well to note. So it's, it's not kind of a black or white, either the building gets knocked over and turned into a five-story something or other, or it stays as it exists. I think there's, there's in-betweens there that we'll, we'll have the opportunity to weigh in on. All right, moving along. Hard to believe we're talking about it. Item 11, May 4, 2026, annual town meeting warrant closing date, potential warrant articles. Mr. Milano?
Yes, I forget now what I put in the packet as the proposed closing date. So, we've, we had a department head meeting last week. I, you know, I started to remind the department heads that we're coming up to annual town meeting, so if anybody's got ideas for warrant articles, now's the time. We recommend that we establish a date of Friday, January 2, where the warrant will be closed after that point, which will get all the warrant articles to the warrant committee, first part of January. So, January 2 is the proposed date. And then we'll start to put together a draft list of that warrant.
January 2 for the May town meeting?
To close the warrant.
To close the warrant?
Yep.
Okay.
And so we'll, we'll get that notice out and around, so that boards and committees have time to submit. That date is a little bit dependent on when we first meet in January. So, the following week, the 9th, may work better if the board meets on the 13th.
I, I was going to be in China on the 6th, so I would prefer that we meet on the 13th.
Then, the recommended closing date would be January 8th and 9th.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that better, coming off of New Year's.
Yeah, gives, gives another week. I think that's right.
Okay.
Less of objections.
Does that sound good to everybody? We don't need to vote on it. All right, I'm getting a thumbs up online, too. Okay, then I think that's, that's that for the moment. Article, or item 12 is discussion approval, select board member committee assignments. Mr. Milano?
Yes, well, with our new member.
Welcome to Mr. Driscoll again.
So we have, in the, in the packet with the motions, we did put a list of the current committee assignments. We did fill all the slots, I believe, except for one position on the policy committee. But otherwise, if there was any places where current members were feeling like they're a little overworked, or if there's any areas, Mr. Driscoll, that you were particularly interested in, then--
I'll just take what's open.
So the policy committee, who's the other representative? Is that me?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so the policy is open. I know that I filled the landing seat as well, if that's something that you're interested in, or if there's any other committee that you're interested in, we can talk about, you know, sort of rejiggering things a bit.
Whatever, whatever place needs to be filled.
Well, maybe we'll start with the policy committee then, and then we can see as, as you sort of get exposed to more of the boards, if there's something that piques your interest, Mr. Driscoll, just let us know, and then we can--
Yeah.
We can talk about it. Okay, well, I guess that's that for--
We will need a vote to make--
Oh, yes. So I'll, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Driscoll as a representative to the policy committee.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
And then this will be a roll call vote, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Mr. Chair, just as we know previously, usually abstaining on our own, Mr. Driscoll probably abstaining and appointing himself to a committee he's going to serve on.
Would you like to retroactively abstain from your vote? Typically, we abstain--
Abstain.
Yeah, that's fine. Nobody is going to hold that against you. But thank you, Mr. Wells, for the point of procedure. It's important.
You're welcome.
Don't mean I got thrown off already?
Just can't vote for yourself for reasons of politic, I guess. Mr. Milano, then we are going to move along to select board goals.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We had, so we had the retreat in October, and then we discussed the goals at the meeting after that. After I had put together a draft, the board had requested some tweaks to just kind of categorize them a little bit more clearly. So, the only changes I've made have been to categories. So I grouped in a couple under town on land, both the town farm and the Easton Fire Station property. And then I grouped in a couple under long-term capital projects, which was alluding to both the Atherton Station and then the school project. And then lastly, pulled together some policies, training, and employee engagement as kind of a broader category that grouped in some of the things that we had discussed that were a little bit more disparate. So again, there were no changes to the goals themselves, but more so kind of where they were slotted. I believe I had captured everything, and there hadn't been a further conversation.
There hasn't been a further conversation.
And I don't, I think, like I said, I think I got the elements of it, but if I missed anything, or if members would prefer changes, et cetera, obviously, we can make those.
Okay, questions or thoughts from the members? So, and then maybe just in terms of context for you, Mr. Driscoll, this is not like a binding document. This is, we had a retreat as a select board, and Mr. Wells wasn't able to join, but Ms. Hagerty, Mr. Daly, and myself did. This was after Mr. Cohane had resigned. So it was really kind of the three of us putting these ideas down, but just kind of a sense of the direction that we wanted to go over the coming year.
All right, Paul.
Great. Ms. Hagerty, you have your hand up?
So, I just wanted to respond to the statement that was just made. I know that folks were not all necessarily present, but I do think that we should use this as a, as a compass. And I'm not saying you're not suggesting this. I do think we should use this as a sort of compass or work plan for the board for the year, to the extent that we can. I know that competing priorities always shift their way in, emergencies come up, but I think this is a good, I think this is a good start. And I think that we should continue to go through this process on a annual basis. And I think it'll be good for the, sort of the morale and the, the, you know, just the, just having a framework. I mean, organizations need to have frameworks and goals. So I think it's really great that we got this done.
Thank you, yes. My, my, my hope was that we would have had it done in June, but better late than never, I think, as, as they say.
Absolutely.
And I, I agree with your statement, and I would also, you know, add that for any specific issue, members should always vote in the way that they feel is representative of themselves, or the, you know, their, their thoughts, or ideas, or how they feel the town feels about something. So this is not a binding contract, but it is helpful, I think, in terms of thinking about the broader issues that we're focused on as a select board to keep us oriented. So, Mr. Milano, do we, is this a formal document we would approve?
If the board feels it's complete and ready to go, then it, they, there should be a vote to adopt them, whether this evening or December 9th, however the board feels comfortable.
Mr. Driscoll, do you feel like you've had enough time to look at this?
Yeah.
Okay. So I will take a motion if someone would like to make one.
I will move to approve the select board's goals.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. This is a, any further discussion? This is a roll call vote. Mr. Wells?
I'll abstain, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, then we have our select board policies and code of conduct. Mr. Milano?
Sure, again, this is just picking up on items that we had been working on and had in, in queue and in progress. So I included in the packet, again, just as a reminder, the policies that the board has previously adopted that govern how meetings work, to relationships between board members, staff and board members, and so on, and public participation. We had also talked about a code of conduct, which I had put together a draft code of conduct for review, after reviewing a bunch of other examples, of which I included in the packet. There are a number of communities included in there. I tried to pull elements out that I thought I saw as kind of a through line in a lot of what other communities had adopted. It is lengthy, so it may benefit from editing. It's, it probably has a lot in there, but that's the work product that you have, is a draft code of conduct based on what other communities have. And again, it goes through kind of, you know, the first being how members will carry out their work in relation to each other, how members coordinate and work with town staff and the administration, you know, being in terms of communications flows through myself, down to the town staff, board members refraining from reaching out directly to town staff, and refraining from criticizing town staff directly, you know, making critical comments as needed to myself for town administration to address at least as the first chance, and then kind of other elements along there. So again, that's a very short presee of what's in there, but it was pulling from other communities to give this board a, a building block to start with and to edit away from there.
So if I'm maybe so bold as to propose a step of action, we, as of about five minutes ago, now have a fully-staffed policy committee for the select board, of which Mr. Driscoll is now a member. I think this is the perfect thing for a policy committee to sit down, look at, and maybe come back with, we could do some work on it and then come back to the select board on the 9th. Mr. Driscoll, if you're open to that, you and I could meet as the policy committee and have a look at this. And so if the other members without objection, we could, we could proceed in that way?
Okay, great.
And so, well, I'll, we'll reach out and get, get something on the books for the next, next couple of weeks. Mr. Milano, we have board and committee reports. The first one is the Milton Budget Coordination Committee. So, actually, Ms. Hagerty, I'll turn this over to you. I know you're the chair of that committee.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's been a lot of work this month on the Budget Coordination Committee. We met several times. Most of it was involving an in-depth review of the five-year plan, going through this, especially with school committee members and school committee staff, to see how, what the alignment might be between our five-year financial forecast and a five-year forecast for them. We also had members of the committee weigh in on the reserves policies that, that Member Daly and I and Mr. Milano and the finance staff have been working on. Future conversations on the Budget Coordination Committee are likely to include or involve scenario planning, so really applying what we understand from the five-year plan against a set of potential scenarios that the town may face over the next decade or five years. And we've started conversations about what this work might culminate in, and we're thinking we may develop a published viewpoint or communication that kind of integrates all of this and just provides a little bit of a report or a primer for the town on--
Nope, froze.
We lost you there, Ms. Hagerty. Well, if she can't come back, Mr. Daly, I suppose you were part of this, so maybe you could--
I guess we're all there. I don't have much to add to what Meg was saying.
Okay.
We've done the policies, we've had multiple meetings, we had separate meetings, not only in the budget committee, but also a policy group, as well as our--
Oh, I just lost my whole Zoom.
Are we offline completely?
Hey, Booth?
Did I screw that up?
Are we still on YouTube?
We're trying to figure it out.
Okay.
All right. Are we taking five?
Yeah, let's take a quick five while they figure it out.
Thank you for bearing with us. A little unforeseen technical problem here. And Ms. Hagerty--
All right, there we go. All right, well, thank you again for, for, for your patience there. We had a little unforeseen technical difficulty. Ms. Hagerty, Mr. Daly continued your report in your absence, and then we realized that we were not online anymore. So it was on, on our side. Was there anything--
Oh, good.
Anything else?
So we don't have to do it again, right?
You don't, you don't have to do it again. You don't have to do it again.
Perfect.
I will ask if there's anything from the Select Board Finance Committee specifically that you guys would like to report out on. Mr. Milano?
I think it's, I think it's the, oh, sorry. I didn't realize it wasn't my turn.
No, I was just going to say, I don't think there was anything to report. Sorry.
Okay.
Other than we'll have, we're, we're still shooting to get the reserves policies done by the end of December.
Okay, and I know the Traffic Commission, we've just discussed, is going to be meeting on the 2nd.
Correct.
So that's the end of, I think, committees, unless there's anything. We didn't have any of the other ones posted, so I guess that's it. Item 16 is the fiscal year '27 budget, economic development plan, and housing production plan. Mr. Milano?
Thank you. Not a lot to get into this evening. There's a lot to talk about with the '27 budget, but not necessarily this evening. I just, in terms of where we are process-wise, I've received requests back from all of our town departments. We're meeting with department heads now to review their requests prior to submitting that first draft of the budget to the warrant committee by December 1st. So we're working towards that. The, the major kind of issue that we're going to wrestle with for '27 will be health insurance costs, as last year we had a 14% premium increase, and the news has remained the same in terms of where town-- And the news has remained the same in terms of where towns and cities should see their costs be in terms of fiscal 27 for health insurance. There's no good news in that world right now. I've attended a couple of conferences focused on this issue specifically. And the recurring theme has been it's gonna be a challenging year in health insurance. So looking at some options that we may have around that. But, you know, every percent increase on the premium has cost the town about $125,000. So, you know, we expected to be above market around a 7%, 8% premium increase in fiscal 27. We're gonna be closer to 14% based on current estimates. So that's about a $800,000, $900,000 additional cost burden. For the town's budget, never mind the fact that that's a premium increase that employees must also bear. It's certainly, on a percent basis, it's, it's high. And that would be two, potentially two years. So that's generally the ballpark. I just wanted to flag that as kind of one of the big cost pressures now. And we can have a more detailed conversation on the budget at our next meeting in terms of an update on where things stand more broadly. And I, I wanted to talk about the Economic Development Plan and Housing Production Plan specifically, as these are two things we've talked about, they're in, they're in the goals. And for Economic Development Plan, we had some grant funding we've used portions of. We're gonna continue to pursue other grant opportunities, but I'm looking for a sense of the board, and it doesn't need to be tonight. It couldn't be at our, at one of our meetings in December in terms of allocating town funds to, to pursue and complete an economic development plan. And then same question for the Housing Production Plan. The Housing Production Plan went, was no longer official as of January of 2025. Other sources that we pursued, we applied for a grant through the state. We were unsuccessful in that grant. We have, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust may appropriate funding towards a housing production plan. That's something other communities have done. But it's, again, it's using those funds not necessarily to produce housing, which I think they would be more inclined to use the money for. So the last, the other option would be to seek town funds, free cash appropriation for our housing production plan while we continue to pursue other grant opportunities in the meantime. So that's an intro. We can talk about it more in depth now, or I just wanted to get the board thinking about those two options and ways to fund those projects that we've talked about a few times over the past several months.
Do you have an estimated cost on each of those?
So economic development, anywhere between $50,000 and $75,000. Housing production plan, depending on the, the amount of work required that needs to go into taking the prior one. Again, we looked for about a $65,000 grant application. That would be a pretty comprehensive housing production plan. So combined, maybe $150,000 total to do the two. And, you know, as we start thinking about the 27 budget and how to use and where to put free cash, this might be an example of discrete, one-time projects that are a, a good use of those certified funds.
Other questions from the members? When we applied for the grant for the Housing Production Plan, was that prior to being in compliance for the MBTA communities?
I think it was prior to being in compliance. By the time.
By the time we got the note?
Grants were being reviewed, we were compliant. Because we got, we got another grant. This was through the ECO One Stop through, like Masworks and stuff. So we've gotten a Masworks Design Grant. But we did not receive this grant.
Okay.
It wasn't because MBTA communities.
Well, it, I think probably it makes sense to have a, a continued discussion on this in December. I don't see any other questions from the members at the moment.
Okay.
But I, in terms of thinking about where to allocate cash, it does make sense to me, particularly the Economic Development Plan.
Yeah, the Affordable Housing Trust will be having a meeting on Thursday. I think this will be one of the topics. I'll see what the sort of temperature feedback is from the H T. But I would say that both of these are particularly important for us, given the level of development we're going through residentially, having that updated Housing Production Plan, and then also having seen tonight the report that we got around the taxes and our 4% in commercial. The Economic Development Plan is certainly important for us as well.
Ms. Hagerty, you have your hand up?
So a thought, so there are some funds left with the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I don't know if it would be on the table or appropriate to utilize some part of those funds for the Economic Development Plan.
I think that'd be a town meeting decision, wouldn't it?
Those funds are available to be spent, but now they're on the control of the new Master Plan Committee.
Okay.
So as we start to seek members and it's on the agenda to advertise.
Yeah.
We are seeking members to serve on that committee.
Right.
It would be up to that committee, and in, in the goals, this is reflected that, you know, discussing what the Master Plan Committee once established, focusing on economic development, and, and maybe it's cobbling together funds from a few sources, including that appropriation as well.
Yep.
Okay, I think that's probably it for that item then. Mr. Milano, Fiscal Year 27 Capital Budget.
Again, not a lot to report, just a, just a status update to keep the board apprised. The Capital Plan, Capital Improvement Planning Committee is having its meeting, first meeting on Thursday morning as a kickoff. And I know in conversation, Mr. Driscoll and I, he was particularly interested to see how DPW is gonna approach the request for pavement in our road program. And I know that the DPW Director has asked for more than they have received in past years. So there is an interest in trying to find a way to get that appropriation up, to continue putting money backs into, into the road. So to your point, the request is higher than usual. And now we're gonna work our through, through the process alongside all the other capital requests. But I want to make sure I address that point. And then just to give the board a sense of where that sits, Capital Improvement Planning Committee is just kicking off. We should be working over the next couple of months to finalize that recommendation for fiscal 27.
Mr. Driscoll, do you have a question?
I'm glad to hear about the roads.
Okay.
So Nick, I'm off that committee, right?
Oh, yes, I think, yes.
I got booted off.
So, Mr. Driscoll is the citizen member.
You were promoted, I think.
Yes, promoted, that is, moving up in the world. So yes, as you are a resident member, we should replace yourself.
Right, so I don't have to go to that meeting.
Correct, you're not obligated to.
But you gotta come to this one.
No, I know, but the roads will be at the top of the list, I hope.
Well, I, I know Mr. Wells is listening to one pitch anyway, and no, we'll bring that back. And we'll also just, we'll advertise the, a place on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee as well to try to get somebody onto, into that committee. And it's good that they're not too far down the road and they can, that person can pitch in for this year.
Thank you.
Okay, so then Financial Policies, first reading. Is this me that I have to read this thing?
No, just as back, so in our, in our policies, prior to adopting a policy, the, the policy states that there should be two readings of the policy. I have provided in this packet a very marked up version of the Financial Reserves Policy. So if the board's okay to view that as kind of the, the draft before you for action, we can view this as the first reading, and I can, and I can describe it. Or if you'd rather a cleanup version with final edits made before we go too far down that road, it, I'd really defer.
Well, we'll have a second reading before we're approved, yeah. So do members have thoughts about that?
Nothing we haven't been reading.
Well, sir. Well, sir.
Okay, well, I'll take, I'll take a motion on that one then, if we want to move to approve the reading.
Move to approve the first reading of the new financial policies.
Second.
Okay, made by Mr. Daly, seconded by Mr. Driscoll. Mr. Milano, I will turn to you for just a quick overview of that before, but maybe we'll vote and then do that.
Yes, so one thing we've done with the revising the policies, there's a policy summary table at the end of it that just kind of distills some of the key points. So what the policy sets as parameters is having a funding target for free cash of 1% to 3% of the prior year general fund operating budget, which would be in a year like this, 1.5 million to 4.5 million, within that range. It sets a target for the General Stabilization Fund of 5% to 8% of the general fund budget. Right now, the General Stabilization Fund is, is around 4.5%. So it's, it's increasing that target and, and, and requiring the board to take steps to get it to the 5% to 8% of the target. It sets similar targets for the Capital Stabilization Fund, though at lower numbers, at 1/2% to 1%. And then in terms of the Operating Budget Stabilization Fund, which this is the new stabilization fund that was set up through the operating override. So $700,000 from the override is going into a new Operating Budget Stabilization Fund. That will be recurring each year. In addition to that, town meeting appropriated $2 million to this fund. The idea being we'll draw from it in future years to offset substantial increases to budgets, you know, and to try to put off the need for an override. So what the policy states is that you can't withdraw more than 2% of the operating budget out of that stabilization fund in any given year. So while it's there for use and it's intended to be used, or it's not supposed to be a crutch, but to be used prudently over the next five years or so, before the town considers another override. And then the other key policy statements are around our enterprise funds. So we have Water Enterprise, Sewer Enterprise, based on user fees, and then Stormwater, which we talked about this evening, based on impervious surface area. So the policy also sets funding targets for each of those, at 20% for water and 20% for sewer of their budget. So it's a high reserve ratio, but the rationale there being, when it comes to water, if we have a dry, if we have a very wet summer, our costs are pretty fixed, no matter how much it does or doesn't rain. But our revenue could plummet if irrigation's off for the summer, people aren't using their water. So you want to build up a hefty reserve because the income is so variable based on weather. So that's a 20% target for reserves there. For water, we're above it, we're closer to 40%, 45%. For sewer, we're below it, we're closer to 10% to 15%. So we have some work to balance those out a little bit better. Then lastly, Stormwater, it has a policy target of 10% in reserve, which we're below. That's a little bit more stable, it's not weather dependent. Although people like to call it a rain tax, it's not weather dependent. So that is kind of the overall gist. It, it formalizes kind of the practices we've tried to follow, but we don't have a place for people to say, well, what's your reserve policy? It's like, well, we tried to do this, but now we're putting it into words to, to reflect kind of how we've approached the budget, but more so to put it more concrete and, and to hold our, put more guardrails and limits on what, and how we use different funds.
Thank you. Any questions from the members before we vote? I would, my question, I guess, is if whether or not they're, these would not be binding policies. So if there was a way for us not to get to, like, we were trying to get to, you know, 5% to 8% for the general stabilization, and we were stuck at like 4.7%, would we be, what, what would be the consequence of not being at the 5%?
So the language says that the town will strive to achieve that goal.
Okay.
Once we've achieved the 5%, it then sets very strict to not go below.
To not go below it, okay. All right, so we have a motion made and seconded, and Mr. Milano's given us this. Any, any further discussion? This, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Item 20 is the, oh, sorry, item 19, Letter to Verizon Wireless Regarding Areas of Persistent Poor Service.
Yes, sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair. This, again, this is building off, in August, we held a public hearing with Verizon for an installation of a small cell facility on Thatcher Street. And in that conversation, the board and myself raised two persistent areas of poor coverage, both on Cape and Street and in Indian Cliffs more generally. They had committed to, you know, get, looking into it and getting back to us. I followed up several times, haven't heard anything, and all I'm looking for here is a little bit more. Formal of a request from the board, just, it was a, you know, it was a quest made by the board with lack of follow-up. Unsurprisingly, we did get a quick email this evening saying, we're looking into it, we'll be in touch. But I'd like to proceed with just getting this on record, that, you know, we had asked questions during a public hearing, and the, the select board is seeking some, some feedback. And not to say that these are the only two places in Milton with issues, but these are the two, specifically that have come to us and that we raised.
The two areas were Cape and Street, did you say?
Cape and Street.
And then Indian Cliffs generally? Would that include the Ullin Rank area, the Indian Cliffs area? Because that's the area that I'm most familiar with, dropping, I always drop my calls.
I can expand it just to reference that. I'm, my in-laws are in there, and you, you're, we have a couple houses, then it's all over.
Yeah.
So.
And home make, some of the residents up there say there's poors.
So it makes sense, that whole.
Yeah, that whole general area.
Parkway area, so we can just more, and be more specific. And I'll just note that I did provide them a list of locations. If they're looking to add coverage or add towers, I just gave them a list of town on land and said, if there's something that would be helpful, we can have a conversation. So they, they'll enter into lease agreements for land.
Okay, Mr. Wells, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, just talking about a history. So that hole, as you referred to, both Mr. Driscoll and you, Mr. Chair. So that's a significant hole that's existed in the town for quite a while. And it extends all the way up to 138. And then up through Indian Cliffs left. So I don't know what you submitted, Mr. Milano, for locations. We did not control Ullin Rank the last time this was looked at. That's a possibility. And also the roof of Milton High now has some infrastructure on it relative to our INET and, you know, voice over IP phone systems. It might be a location, another location where some, some equipment could be installed that would approve this, this hole as it exists. But those are just two that jump out at me right away, because we, we did not have the lease with, it's gotta be at least 10 years ago we looked at this. And the, in the same context that you're having tonight, this is all with the same words, the same difficulties that existed back then.
And is there a reason why we single Verizon out here? Because, not to shame my own carrier, I have AT&amp;T, and it's also awful in those areas.
We don't have, the Verizon owns the majority, I believe almost everything in Milton is owned by Verizon.
Okay.
The other carriers choose whether or not to rent off of those sites.
Got it.
And they've been the ones asking us for things.
Okay. So we're asking them now?
Yes.
Well, any, any thoughts? I, I would include, I would definitely expand the scope.
Sure.
Of it. Anything else from the members?
I was in Indian Cliffs this weekend, it's very bad.
Yeah. So I'll take a motion on this then?
A motion to approve the letter to Verizon Wireless Regarding Areas of Persistent Poor Service.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded. Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And then we're gonna do some board and committee appointments. I will take motions on these if we want to move through them.
Move to appoint David Cornish to the Milton Historical Commission for a three-year term.
Motion's been made. Any second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Driscoll. All in favor, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
All right, move to appoint Thomas Sharkey to the Equity and Justice for All Advisory Committee for a two-year term.
Second.
Made and seconded. Mr. Wells? The roll call vote.
Um, yes.
Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Master Plan Committee, now, we don't have anybody that's in for this one yet, because it's brand spanking new. But do you want to, do we, we have previously appointed three representatives from the select board? Or including a select board member and then two select board appointees?
Correct, the select board have, yes, three, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so we currently have no applications for the new committee, is that correct?
Correct, so we built out the webpage for it and provided some information about the committee, as well as the taxation aid committee. And so that, this would be up to nine members, so anybody interested is welcome to apply. There's a volunteer form on the town website. If you fill out the volunteer form, it comes to our office. We'll collect all the applicants and then distribute it to the three appointing authorities, which are the town moderator, the planning board, and the select board. And those entities will, will make their appointments accordingly. So we'll start to pitch and advertise this, so, but for anybody interested, please fill out the form. If you go onto the town website and go to the board and committee page or the homepage, you can get brought to it. There's a form to fill out if you have interest in the Master Plan Committee, the Taxation Aid Committee, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, or any of them really. And they'll come to us and we'll, we'll triage and distribute from there.
Thank you. Mr. Wells, you have your hand up?
I just wanted to make sure, because I did receive. I just wanted to make sure, because I did receive an application on Monday, which came to me, but I voted to win, I believe, when?
We did receive that.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, no, I'm sorry, yep, we have it.
Okay.
It's on our list, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. And then, Ms. Hagerty, you were the previous select board appointee to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Is it safe to assume that you would want to maintain that role if and when we just, we'll have to appoint one of our members, I believe, to this committee? So that would be a question to you.
I would be interested if my peers would have me.
Okay, well, it hasn't come to that yet, but when it does, it's good to know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Then we'll move along to item 21, letter of thanks to Colonel Mark Denton for participating in the 2025 Veterans Day Ceremony. I will just add, on a personal note, I was really struck by Colonel Denton. His remarks, I thought, were excellent. And they are now available on Milton Access TV's YouTube channel to stream. If you weren't able to catch them, I believe all of our members here were present. So we all had the opportunity and enjoyment of hearing him speak. Mr. Wells, you have your hand up?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, I just want to echo you. I had the opportunity to have breakfast with Colonel, listen to him also speak there early in the morning on Randolph. And I've always been impressed by the fact that we can have someone from the town who has roots to the town, who served or is serving in the military as Colonel Denton is, to give the keynote on Veterans Day. And I've known his family for many, many years, and I was not surprised when I listened to his comments and all. He's a true credit to the town, a son of Milton, as so many others. And I don't know whether any of you noticed this, but there was a special moment, I know many people went to to visit him and thank him up on the gazebo at the end. But one of those residents is retired Marine Corps Colonel Joe Sweeney, who was a keynote here many years ago. And Joe Sweeney falls in a long line as his father was United States Army General, Charles Sweeney. And I thought it was a special moment that I got to witness those two American heroes share for a moment in our town. That says a lot about the type of individuals that have and continue to come out of this community. So I really thank Alex for locating Colonel Denton. And I was truly inspired and motivated by this man. He's a true credit, not just to our town, but to our country. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Mr. Wells. Would you like to make a motion while you have the floor?
Absolutely, I will make a motion to send a letter of thanks to Colonel Mark Denton, United States Army, participating in leading us in this year's 2025 Veterans Day Ceremony.
Second.
Made by Mr. Wells, seconded by Mr. Driscoll. This will be a roll call vote, and Mr. Wells, you can keep your microphone on.
Absolutely.
Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Item 22, discussion approval, use of the Milton Town Green and Baron Hugo gazebo for the holiday memorial tree program and lighting ceremony sponsored by the Milton Rotary Club during the month of December.
I'll make a motion to approve that use as articulated by you, Mr. Chair.
All right.
I second.
All right, made and seconded by Mr., we've got a virtual second also. So this is roll call, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The, we have discussion approval meeting minutes, October 7th, 2025, October 27th, 2025, and October 28th, 2025. I know, Mr. Driscoll, you'll have to recuse yourself from this one, or just abstain from this one. Did we miss anybody at these meetings? I feel like Mr. Wells wasn't at.
I do too, I think I missed one.
Was one of the ones at the town meeting, wasn't it? The 28th?
Lynn did the work.
Oh, Lynn did the work already, thank you, thank you, Lynn. So I'll take a motion from somebody who can make it on the meetings for the 7th and the 27th.
Move to approve meeting minutes dated October 7th, 2025, and October 27th, 2025.
Seconded by Mr. Wells, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Wells, you can vote on this one. Ms. Wells is a yes, Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
I'm staying.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
All right, move to approve the meeting minutes dated October 28th, 2025. Mr. Wells was not in attendance.
I'll second that one. This is a roll call vote, Mr. Wells?
I'm staying.
Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
I'm staying.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to tie back to the Veterans Day event, just want to thank everybody involved. Alex went through a stressful couple of weeks pulling that together, or month, I should say, with the moving parts that it takes. So thanks to Alex's efforts, I thought it was a successful day. The weather was a little tricky, but he got the note and wrapped it up once the few flakes, the three flakes of snow that went through the air. So thanks to Alex, Anthony Parola, American Legion, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, the high school band, the choir. So it was great just to have everybody and to be out for the day. So again, appreciation there. And I should note to Milton Police, just, they were there with a big presence to make sure that the route down the street was safe. So thanks to everybody who came out. And of course, Delroy, DPW, for always facilitating these events. Couple of holiday events coming up. Lower Mills, Milton Village Holiday Stroll is on the 29th of November, so that's Small Business Saturday, that's 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. The stroll and tree lighting in East Milton is on December 6th, from 3:00 to 5:00, with the tree lighting at 5:00 p.m. More thank yous than I can count on that, on pulling that event together. We've had some donation of labor from Apollo Lighting to do the tree lighting. They've been in East Mountain Square doing that. Secured the tree from the same farm as last year and through the generous donation of Mr. Driscoll and Anthony Musto, once again. So we appreciate for the donation of the tree. DPW staff, the chamber, Scott Farrell, for everybody that they do. So that'll be coming up on the 6th, 3:00 to 5:00, with the tree lighting at 5:00 p.m. over in East Milton. And then, the only thing I just wanted to add is Milton Football is having a good playoff run here, so they're playing Saturday at 3:00 p.m. in Milford against North Attleboro in the semifinals. So just wanted to share that, and that wraps it for myself.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Chair's report, I don't really have anything, you stole my thunder on the football, I was going to call that out, but please go and support the team. They're one win away from, I think, would be their third Super Bowl appearance in five years, which is pretty incredible. The, just to add to the holiday spirit as well, December 5th at the MAC, there's going to be a holiday sing-along, 7:00 to 9:00. We approved the liquor license for that at a previous meeting. So that will be, yeah, 7:00 p.m. start time at the Milton Arts Center. I don't have any other items for myself. But again, thanks to Mr. Ortiz in particular for the work that he did in putting together the, really tremendous Veterans Day event, despite the cold. We did not have any public comments, so I don't believe we have a public comment response. For future meeting dates, I think we kind of agreed here that December 9th, 2025 would be our next meeting. I think it probably makes sense to still keep the 16th on the calendar, just in case we'd have some, because otherwise we start to get into the holiday season and it will be difficult. And then we also discussed, instead of the 6th of January, I think we said we would do the 13th, was it the 13th? Yeah, the 13th, I believe, for January. And then, would we then, I think if we go back to our second and fourth schedules, that could give us that opportunity to do the 13th and then we could potentially do the 27th.
We'd be back on track.
Yeah, and we'd be back on track, exactly. And assuming that those are the second and, okay, great. We often, we schedule, we try to schedule this around availability for all members. Future agenda items. Any, anything from the members? I think we've discussed, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Hagerty.
Yeah, I think in a prior meeting, I know I raised it, getting the Board of Health to come in and discuss the progress on the disbursement of the opioid settlement funds. I don't know if they've had any outreach on that yet, if we've been able to schedule them.
Yes, and now that you say that, I know it was one of the December dates. I will coordinate with them for December. But we, I did communicate and we did pencil them in, I just forget the exact date that we did so.
We also, we had and then removed from this agenda item the food pantry in the Milton Fund in light of the government shutdown. But now that the government is functioning again, we took that off. But we will have, usually have a conversation with them in December as well, right?
Yes, and I've been in coordination with them to do so.
Great. Not hearing any other agenda items. We are going to.
The meeting of the ninth, you said the old firehouse, Nick?
The select board meeting will be here, the night before is the Mass Stop meeting. That is scheduled to be.
You think it ought to be moved here, that's a small room.
No.
I believe it's booked, this building was already booked. We had tried to.
That's a small room.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
There'll be a virtual attendance ability?
We had planned to offer that. Anyway.
Well, it might be a packed house. Okay, I am going to pursue it to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respective collective bargaining. I'm going to move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respective collective bargaining, Milton Clerical Unit of Southeastern Public Employees Association, Milton Professional Management Association, Milton Public Employees Association, Milton Firefighters Local 1116, Milton Police Association, Milton Superior Officers, Milton Library Association. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the select board, the select board will not return to open session. Can I have a second on that one?
Second.
Thank you.
A second.
This is a roll call vote, Mr. Wells?
I'm staying.
Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I'm going to move that we enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property Quarry Hills. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation, negotiating position of the select board, the select board will not return to open session.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Driscoll, this is a roll call vote, Mr. Wells?
I definitely have to abstain on this one, yes.
Okay, Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll? And Mr. Daly?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I'm going to move into, I'm going to move us into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property land off Guile Road, based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board,